Can I start recording here?
It's already.
It's through.
Or is it paused?
Yeah. Okay. It is seven o'clock. We'll start the meeting. Erica, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mitchell? Here. Vice Mayor Best?
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Present.
Councilman Fahad?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There's a quorum present.
Thank you. Um, let's do the invocation. Councilman Walter Fahad?
On this evening, we ask for patience to listen to and consider dissenting opinions. Uh, we ask for open-mindedness, uh, in order to be charitable of each other's, uh, each other and each other's ideas. And we also asked, uh, for resolve to, uh, stand up for the things that we think are right for the residents of this beautiful city. Amen.
Clegg allegiance? The audience will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Nice to see so many people in the audience. Um, I wanted to ask if it's okay with, um, we'll go through the order of the agenda, but, um, I know we have some ladies here from the Women's Club and, um, that item is 12B, which is at the end of the agenda, just to save them time. If the rest of the council would be okay with moving that one, um, to, um, after awards and presentations?
Be okay with that.
Stay?
Good, Mayor.
Yep.
Okay. Um. Item 4A, Miami Springs Police Department, a swearing-in ceremony for our new officer, Natasha Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here. Uh, I'd like to introduce Natasha Hernandez. Please come on up. Natasha is a graduate of Flanagan High School. She graduated in, uh, 2013. She earned her associate's degree from Broward College in 2015. Bachelor's degree in criminal justice from, uh, Florida International University in 2018. And she started working for us as a dispatcher in February of 2019. And, uh, I remember her first day and, uh, she was going through training. And, uh, turned out that she became one of our best dispatchers and not just dispatching, but she also helped to train new dispatchers. So on one end, I was sorry to see her go as a dispatcher, but on the other hand, I was very happy to have her going to the police academy. She, uh, started the academy in September of 2020 and graduated, uh, on the 16th of this month. And I have to say that having been, uh, my first career as a City of Miami police officer, having sent her to the City of Miami and the accolades and the outstanding, um, performance that she did and how she represented Miami Springs, I wanted to thank her. We, uh, we got constant, uh, comments from her instructors. Uh, so Natasha, would you please raise your hand and repeat after me? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Florida, against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to uphold and enforce the laws of the United States, the State of Florida, the County of Miami Dade, and the City of Miami Springs. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purposes of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of police officer of the City of Miami Springs, acting to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Now Natasha has joined here, members of her family, members of her graduating class. Her, her mom is here, her mom's boyfriend, one of her brothers. We've got representatives from the City of Highlandale Beach Police Department that graduated with her, City of Doral, and City of Pearl Gables. And the gentleman from the City of Miami is one of her drill instructors, Officer Coto, who I've known for many years and does an outstanding job. Natasha has asked her mother to come up and pin the badge on her, so. Don't get nervous. And to Natasha and your family, I welcome you to the Miami Springs Police Family. Uh, we're in this together and, uh, I wish you nothing but success in the police department. One of the two things that I love to do as chief, one is to soar in new officers and the second one is to promote officers to higher ranks. So you got the first one down, now you gotta work on the second one, okay? Congratulations. You, you don't have to, but if you'd like to say something, you're more than welcome to.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to give a moment to thank the people who came and offered the opportunity for allowing me to be in Miami Springs. I would like to thank my class for the job they've done for the top of the last seven months. I wouldn't have made it through, so thank you. And thank you, Officer Coto, for everything that you have taught me. And hopefully I can show the city everything that's been happening in the past seven months.
Welcome.
Officer Hernandez, would you like to have your friends and family come up and take a photo?
Come on up.
We should have taken the mask off.
I know. One picture without mask.
You guys don't have to wear it.
You should have told her.
We gotta redo it. I need them.
Great pictures. Thank you, Officer Hernandez, for serving and protecting our city. Thank you, Officer Hernandez and Chief. These are the, uh, our officers and especially our new officers are going to be here for years serving and protecting our community. And it's so, um, it's such a wonderful thing that when the chief said that we can promote from within, people that are familiar with our community and, um, and, and, uh, have them protect us, which is ultimately what they're doing, protecting our way of life. So thank you. Um, okay, so the next agenda item is a presentation by Lynn Brooks. Is Lynn here? By Lynn Brooks and, um, Barbara Sanchez, President of Crime Prevention Alliance of Florida.
Hello.
You're, you must be, uh, Barbara Sanchez? Hi, nice to meet you. And you're with the Crime Prevention Alliance of Florida, along with the sculptor artist, Mr. Julio, Julio Cesar Hernandez and Vice President, Mr. Marcos Corian?
Corian, yes.
For the Together We Can Project, the first monument dedicated to senior citizens.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. I always agree because I know that you're very busy. And wow, what a great day for officers to be, you know, joining our city. Um, I'm very familiar with the city because I've worked with it, uh, for over 22 years. And I can tell you, it's a precious city. Mayor, welcome. Um, the Crime Prevention Alliance, I am the president and the founder. Their mission is to, um, raise public awareness of crime prevention methods through a partnership of volunteers, law enforcement, while creating unity among communities. At this time, I'm going to present to you the first, one of the pieces of the first monument dedicated to, um, senior citizens for the first time in the State of Florida. Heidi, is it okay I can show you the rest of the pictures? Can all of you receive the pictures?
Give them to the city clerk, please, and she'll pass them.
Um, and obviously, uh, this is for the, um, mission of, uh, the presentation. Uh, by the way, this is, uh, the sculptor, Mr. Julio Cesar Hernandez. He specializes in, uh, life-size monuments, and this will be eight feet. And it will be located in the City of Medley with Honorable Mayor Roberto Martell. And it will be the first monument, again, dedicated to senior citizens. Why dedicated to senior citizens? Because for the first time, any senior citizen, any family member, not a victim of crime, not necessarily, any mother of an officer, any aunt of an officer, that person can reach the Crime Prevention Alliance and put that person's name on the monument that you'll see in front of you. The monument has four figures. An African-American figure representing the African-American community. A Hispanic figure representing the Hispanic community. This wonderful lady here representing the entities of Eastern Europe, Jewish and the American culture, and the Micasuki tribe of Indians. So trust me when I tell you, it's taken me 15 years to build this monument and finally make it a reality. And as my mission statement and our mission statement in this organization, while creating unity among communities, and that's exactly what we do. We build and we create and we unite. And so, Mayor, with all due respect, I will ask that the City of Miami Springs join the other municipalities and, um, and other law enforcement agencies and have at least seven seniors that are dedicated in Miami Springs, staff, citizens, whomever is designated to be on this monument. And so, uh, any questions so far?
Any questions from the council?
Uh, when is the dedication going to be?
Uh, sir, the, um, the monument is done, all four pieces. Right. So now we are working for the groundbreaking, which I do hope that everybody up here will join Mayor Martell because he's very excited that his colleagues. And he, I have to say, uh, with all due respect, everybody listens to you, you know, go meet with the mayors. I said, sir, there's a lot of mayors. But as I'm six one, I'm requesting honorably for Mayor Martell, who has done an outrageous job for the City of Medley, to unite with him. to unite with him for our seniors in the state of Florida. And that's, right now, we are doing the permits, and we're working to do the groundbreaking towards the end of June. And then the unveiling, God permitting and all with us, will be Crime Prevention Month, which will be the month of October. And that is, hopefully, with the social distancing and our situation with COVID for our seniors, that I believe with the information I got from the governor's office, I think we are pretty close to having a lot of seniors vaccinated. So hopefully, it'll be a grand day for them and their families. I can't wait to see some seniors from different cities, their families show up and know that that senior is going to be on the monument forevermore because they did something valuable and they enhanced our community somehow. And so, that's what this monument is about.
Through the chair, I had a question. So thank you for taking on this thoughtful initiative. I clarify for me, it sounded like you had said that you need seven seniors from us. What's the request that you need from our city in order to, as you said, join the mayor of Medley?
I say seven. If it's less, with a minimal cost, it's over 62 years of age, that senior citizen, and $62 for each senior citizen. That name will be permanently placed on the monument, the base of the monument, as you can see. We have the architects and obviously the construction company working very closely, excuse me, working very closely with the sculptor in the city to make this a reality. Now, some cities have less, but minimal seven for the city of Miami Springs.
Do you have a sample with like the name placard would look like, something a little more detailed than this?
If you go on the website, crimepreventionalliance.com, you'll see. And by the way, that's a very good question because I get that question a lot. And I have it on my phone, but with all due respect, yes, you go on the website. Bricks Are Us is the company that's working with us, and we'll be printing out the names.
So is this open for families that want to do this like in remembrance for a senior? Or does it have to be like nominated by the city? Because you're
Another good question. Like I said earlier, for example, the PVA obviously is behind this project unconditionally, which is a blessing, and law enforcement. Alliance is all about the law enforcement, the unity, and putting law enforcement closer to the cities and the citizens. And that's what the alliance is for. In my 28 years, I have to say that we've always had that unity with law enforcement and the cities. Of course, people change, people leave, but if you go into the website, you see who I am and my proclamations, my key to the city from Miami Beach, and that's a blessing that my work is recognized all over. But at this point, to answer your question, sir, yes, if you have a law enforcement or if you have someone or your neighbor, yeah, or a dignitary, anyone, exactly, or military that wants to be on the monument, absolutely. They go on their website, and you follow the application, and you pay your fee, and that's it.
Any other questions?
That is correct. And I have to say, Mayor, if I may, before I go, for example, Lieutenant Carlisle worked over nine years with me in crime prevention. And I'm sorry that he's passed, but he was an exceptional human being, exceptional. He always told me that I was a statue. He always told me I was a statue, and I was 600 pounds back then when I was working with him. I was 600 pounds, and he told me, "You're a statue, Barbara." And his name, Mayor, with all due respect, will be on that monument with the honorees of law enforcement. Because remember, we have celebrities, we have VIPs, we have the seniors, and we have 60 musicians. For example, Irae Kachao. If you go on the website, Irae Kachao, the Mambo King, that worked very closely and is very close, and God rest his soul, with Andy Garcia, the actor. I got permission, his name is already imprinted, will be on the monument. So it's not just, no, it's for the seniors over the age of 62, anyone you know. Exactly, and it's also to create awareness, that is correct. Any other questions?
Any questions? No. All right, so to be clear, what you're looking from the city is to give you names or point names of persons that we believe should be honored and to be present at the ceremony?
You will be invited to the unveiling, that is correct.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Well, thank you, and thank you for this worthwhile project.
Through the chair, would it be possible for you guys to provide the city staff with something that had a little more detail about where exactly it's going to be and some pictures that aren't so grainy? I mean, I know it's on the website, but it would probably be best if you guys provided like a little packet that you could give to city staff so that they could pass that along so that we have a little bit more to go off of?
Your questions have been exceptional. I hope I'm answering all to a T. I did a presentation to the Leagues of City, Mayor, and through the Leagues of City, I sent that package to all the mayors. And now I have to go to the mayors higher up, to the leagues, all the way up to Jacksonville, I'm sorry, Tallahassee. So, but I did send that package to the Leagues of City. If you want, I'll have my staff send it to you directly, is that okay?
Send it to our city clerk, please.
And I'll get your information.
Thank you.
I'm here for you.
So much.
And whatever you need, I'm here for you.
Was there anything you wanted to add?
Just to touch base on, Barbara's been doing this for a long time. I just kind of got involved because that's what I do, and of course, with my police alliance. It's really also about awareness for the senior citizens and how they're taken advantage of criminally, even by people that are in their family, and getting law enforcement more involved in the crimes against seniors and maybe developing, like, the small department only has a few detectives, and maybe one detective can actually be more specialized in the senior crimes. And sometimes that gets lost in some of the departments, especially the bigger ones. And they don't know how to charge a charge and that type of thing. So this monument will actually bring everybody together, create the chiefs to actually maybe sit down or whoever they send their representatives to develop a program for the seniors in law enforcement. So thank you very much for seeing us and our statue. Thank you very much.
I, through the chair, if I might, Mayor. Ms. Sanchez, first of all, I'd like to, what a great way to get a point across through the arts. First thing that occurred to me when I saw a statue coming in.
I have to commend him as well because
You have fine work, sir.
My first, by the way, my first initial sculptor, Mr. Lavo, built the idea with me, and he passed away with cancer. I had to look for another sculptor that believed in the monument, believed in crime prevention, and believed in law enforcement with the cities. And this gentleman to specialize in, when you go into his website, to specialize to see what he does is amazing. But thank you, sir, yes, through this monument, yes, we are creating unity and awareness of senior crimes and abuse.
And I imagine you have a deadline that you need these names from the city by, and that would be?
Yes, that's correct, it's in the package, sir.
Thanks very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, and thank you, and all of you, stay safe and stay in this wonderful city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good night. Okay, so we're going to move up Agenda Item 12B to now because it's kind of fitting since it would be ultimately, if passed, if voted on by the council, would be an award presentation. It is, I'd like to ask the council to consider, and this was brought to my attention by a Miami Springs Women's Club member, that the Miami Springs Women's Club is just one of these civic clubs in our community that does so much constantly, ongoing for, not just for our residents, but for surrounding communities. They touch so many people throughout Miami-Dade County and throughout the state of Florida. And if you knew them, they're traveling to, you know, on Memorial Day, to, I think, Tampa and all these, you know, just amazing, the continual projects that they do. And the least of all, I mean, I get, not least of all, but one of them, very fitting, is that every year they hold a candidates, Meet the Candidates Forum. They're not required to, there's nothing that says they have to. They do it just as a civic service whenever there is an election so that the residents in the community have an opportunity to meet the candidates in a non-political setting, very, just not at a public location, but on their own, and the candidates feel comfortable talking to them, and the residents feel comfortable asking questions. And they did that recently with the latest election, as I've done with so many other years. And that's just one tiny project that they do along with so many others. So one of the members of the Miami Springs Women's Club had suggested that the city designate a portion of Park Avenue alongside of the Women's Club, which is right across from City Hall, as Miami Springs Women's Club Way, which I think is very fitting, and it's in keeping with what the city did recently with the Lions Club, another civic club that has been in the community in the same location for so many years and does so much for the community. So if that is, I would like to get the consensus, do we need to take a vote on this or just consensus to move forward? We have several members here from the Women's Club. I don't know if you'd like to come and speak, if you'd like to say a few words to the council?
I'll answer your question, Mayor. Consensus is fine for today because what we'll do is we'll bring back, if there's consensus, we'll bring back a resolution at the next meeting. I did also want to mention that as far as the name goes, we're going to make sure that that full name actually fits on the signage because it is a little bit lengthy.
And we're leaving off great Florida Federation.
Yeah, so if there's an alternative name, I'm happy to hear about it, but we were concerned a little bit about, you know, Miami Springs Women's Club Way maybe a little lengthy for a sign, so.
Good evening. Thank you very much. You've done the first part of it. I just wanted to let you know a little of the synopsis of the Miami Springs Women's Club. It started in 1939, and it started at the City Hall. We had our first meetings where, when it was 201 Broadway, not Westwood. The the club started the first library, Miami Springs, in that City Hall location. Then in 1941, we moved. We didn't move then. I can't see. Our first community project was to beautify and provide entrances to the town on Westwood Drive, Curtis Parkway, and Royal Pointe Siena. And then we, in 1949, we moved to our home across the street. Then the library was, it was in the home of the library also, and it moved in 1959 to 60. They moved from here down to where they are now, that used to be the recreation center of Miami Springs. From the beginning to present, we've provided many community services. We have a scholarship that provides for nursing and the arts students yearly. We have a medical, a free medical loan closet that provides for walkers, wheelchairs, crutches, chains, all sorts of medical needs that you might need, you know, things like that, not other, not bandages or anything. Although they did do that during the war, they donated bandages and such. We have art classes every Tuesday from 10 to 1, from 11 to 1, I'm sorry. Of course, you said about the Meet the Candidates. We also have a yearly health and wellness fair, fashion show, and various luncheons for fundraisers. And our clubhouse is used for rentals to the community events. Some of the organizations that we help otherwise are Operation Smile, the VA Fisher House, Pelican Harbor School Backpack Program, Village Freedge, that's F-R-E-E-D-G-E, which is Food for the Needy, Relay for Life, and many more. These are some of the many ways we help, and we really thank you for this consideration, and we will figure out a name. MS Women's Club Way.
Well, you could do two lines, I mean, you know, Miami Springs Women's Club Way.
We'll let you work with our city manager on figuring out something.
Through the chair, I'd just like to mention, while the ladies are up here, that I was waiting for this to happen one day, and I think it happened at the right time with Maria Mitchell sitting in the seat, so.
Well, there's two Women's Club members here.
Check as well. It's about time somebody, this has been Yeah, great idea. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So do we have consensus among the members to go forward with this project? Is that acceptable, Heidi?
Absolutely. I think what we'll do is we'll bring it back if it fits, and I defer to William and staff on that. We'll bring it back as Miami Springs Women's Club Way. And if we need an alternative, we'll advise.
Through the chair, this is a process, this goes through the county, right?
So So you'll have a resolution on the next meeting agenda for you to approve the co-designation, and then, yes, it does go to the county.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, okay, let's move on to Open Forum, and we have several people signed up for Open Forum. The first one is Mr. Dan Wells.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Dan Wells, I live on Quail Avenue. You all have in front of you this sheet, I printed it out, so it might be easier to understand. First of all, thank you for allowing me to voice my concern about the violation of our city municipal code in regard to the display of political signs on city property. As I explained with supporting documents at the last city council meeting, our city has a law on the books, Section 15029, that prohibits political signs on public property. I think we can all agree on that. And today I have submitted to Mr. William Alonso, our city manager, a formal complaint about the signs on Curtis Parkway. And let me be clear, the signs erected by the Miami Springs Historical Society are in full compliance with our municipal code, and my remarks in no way refer to those. And while I'm on the topic of our municipal code, I'd like to mention if the argument is made that hashtag #OneNation refers to political organizations in Australia and the United Kingdom, that the applicable code does not differentiate between domestic and international politics. Now, I'd like to respond to Councilman Fahey's disingenuous and condescending letter in the Gazette in which he suggests that hashtags mean nothing and that inadequate research was done by this well-meaning resident and in which he laments the lack of unity in our country. First, as far as hashtags go, in today's digital and print media, hashtags are ubiquitous and are used to direct the reader's attention. The dictionary definition states, "A hashtag is used to, quote, 'to identify digital content on a specific topic,'" end quote. While hashtags may be used, as Dr. Fahey's letter states, informally to express context, the use of hashtags is also widely known to be used as an advertising device to promote organizations, companies, and ideas to the public. Second, in regard to research, I would wholeheartedly agree. The group behind this project consists of primarily, if not all, registered Republicans. A little Google research will discover that fact in the public record. Dr. Fahey's contention is that the hashtag and violation of our city code is innocent and means nothing more than an exhortation for our country to unite. That is of noble intent. I will discuss intent in a moment, but first, if that is true, then the smallest amount of research done before selecting this particular hashtag, hashtag #OneNation, would have revealed that it directs the reader to a right-wing political fundraising group founded by Karl Rove. It has also been mentioned It has also been mentioned that one organization, hashtag One Nation, may refer to as a political group that attempts to be all-inclusive, neither supporting Republicans nor Democrats. However, since this group is political as well, reference to it would also be in violation of our city code. The fact that there may exist alternative references to hashtag One Nation does not lessen the violation. As Dr. Fahey points out, hashtags are not proprietary. Were one to put up hashtag Amazon on the signs, I am confident few readers in today's America would think of the river in South America. Similarly, when the reader sees hashtag One Nation, he or she is not restricted to an understanding that calls for unity. Mr. Tom Curtis, the publisher of the Gazette, pretty much makes the same point when in his opinion piece in the current edition. He expresses amazement to discover that the other hashtag on the signs, hashtag Miami Springs, brings up the digital competitor to his print newspaper. In regard to Dr. Fahey's last point, I would just like to say that if the purpose of these signs is to promote unity among the citizenry, I'm all for it. However, I do not feel inclined to associate myself with those who intentionally or unintentionally violate the laws of our city. I'm all for putting my arms around my fellow Miami Springs residents, but let's unite by complying with our city's laws in a nonpartisan fashion. In his letter, Dr. Fahey also references an article from a year ago in which one of the organizers, quote unquote, "explained the intent of the project." Well, as the old saying goes, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions." I know from personal experience that in regard to Miami Springs city code violations, those who enforce the code do not care one bit what one's intent is. Leave your boat in your front driveway for a week with the intent to wash it and see who comes knocking at your door. Lead your hedges with the intent to trim them later, grow into the right of way or the sidewalk, and see what happens. The list goes on. Lastly, I don't know about you, but when I make a mistake, intentionally or not, my normal response is something along the lines of oops, sorry, and I correct whatever mistake I made. In this case, the illegal signs could very easily, and at little cost and effort, be corrected in any one of three ways. One, the hashtag and violation of our city code could be painted over. Two, the hashtag could be covered with white tape. Or three, a sticker with a new hashtag and compliance with our city code could be applied to cover the political reference. I must wonder, considering the great reluctance to simply correct this violation, what truly lies behind it? Mayor Mitchell has stated her desire to keep things bipartisan. I applaud that sentiment. In summation, I would like to ask this council to apply the laws of our city in a uniform manner, favoring neither the right nor the left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Martin Crossland, Mr. Crossland.
Good evening, Martin Crossland, 900 Clover. First of all, I want to welcome all these new faces in the council, especially our wonderful Maria Mitchell as the mayor. Welcome and good to see you all. Well, Mr. Wells seems to have said it all. I was going to speak something about this as well, but why not? Here I am. What is a hashtag? Well, I looked it up in Wikipedia, in fact, and it states basically that it is a widely used in photo sharing services as a form of user-generated tag, and it enables cross-referencing of content sharing a subject or theme. The cross-referencing bit is the thing where a hashtag is not just any old thing you cross-reference. Dr. Fahey states that a hashtag doesn't represent a group or organization. Indeed, when you look for hashtag One Nation on Google, it will direct you to Instagram, which brings up all kinds of stuff totally unrelated to anything to do with One Nation. But eventually, after a few misleading sites, including a clothing site from the UK and a pub in British Columbia, you get to One Nation America, which is, of course, Karl Rove's dark money site promoting a right-wing political agenda. I highly doubt that the text on these flags is promoting a pub in British Columbia or a UK clothing company. So it can only be that it is promoting a right-wing political agenda. We are getting less and less protection from our council if everyone is permitted to place a hashtag directing you to a right-wing political agenda throughout our public areas in Miami Springs, hidden in an attempt at patriotism by attaching it to a sacred American flag. Can I place a line of flags opposite these with hashtag Medicare for All? What the person who placed these flags claims and the results are two entirely different outcomes. Dr. Fahey mentions unity and understanding. I lament that this public display has created a situation very far from unity and understanding. I lament that this public, yeah, Dr. Fahey, you're either totally bamboozled by the sign or in agreement with the agenda. As a further matter, I appreciate, Dr. Fahey, that you were the only council member to answer my inquiry regarding the situation of 281 Hammond Drive, where the homeowner has concreted over the entire frontal area of his residence, including the swale. Were you able to investigate this? Is this to be permitted or are we doomed to become another Hailea? And anybody that wants to see this, all you need to do is to go onto Google Maps, search 281 Hammond Drive, and take a picture, and there you will see this monstrosity. My word, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Marsha Braun.
Ms. Braun. I can take my mask off, right? Thank you. I was here two weeks ago greeting you and basically in support of Mr. Wells, seeing him as a citizen, fellow citizen, who really took that closer look and was concerned enough to do some research and to come before you. So since then, I want you to know that I have been to Curtis Parkway and I have checked out all the signs. And I did find Kansas, you know, my home state, and I was pleased to see their motto. I think you might like it. It's "To the Stars Through Difficulties." Ad astra per astra, for those of you who went the original. Of course, when I read that, I also saw the hashtag One Nation, and I wasn't as pleased with that. I also spoke on the phone with Dr. Fahey. I also read the Gazette. I read Mr. Wells' letter. I read Dr. Fahey's letter. I read Tom Curtis's editorial. Last night, when I pulled up the agenda to see if this item was somehow there and saw that it wasn't, I emailed the entire council to ask, what is the procedure? What is the process? Or how do you get things done? And I want to thank Dr. Fahey because you actually responded to me to help me understand the process. So this was my activity record or my activity report. And you can see, I think, that I don't fit the description, the description of somebody belonging to a group whipped up to frenzy, as you, Dr. Fahey, said in your article, in your letter. So I don't know who these frenzied people are, but I think most of us are trying to be reasonable and fair in our discussion of this issue. I was naive, I'll admit, to think that between two weeks ago and now, you would have had like a working meeting somewhere and you would have discussed that issue. So I now understand, because of the sunshine law and all, that actually your working meetings really are now. These are working meetings. So I thank you for the education. I'm learning as we go, and I think we all are. I was also naive in my expectation that the Gazette would do some investigative journalism, not in easy embrace of Dr. Fahey's point of view, nor depending on just a reference to last year's interviews. That seemed naive to me as well. My idea of investigative research included perhaps money, wanting to know if there were any dollars or whatever involved in these signs, this hashtag One Nation. My question would be, from whom did the money come and to whom did the money go? That seems like not cursory investigation or research, but an appeal to go deeper, to really get to the bottom of this. Because as you can see, many of us are not willing, are not, we don't think we're there yet. So I think this needs to continue. Speaking of the letter, and I hope I don't offend by saying this, but I was wondering if it was even appropriate for a councilman to write that letter, Dr. Fahey, or the entire council? I don't know. I'm just asking because that, along with the decision made by Tom Curtis, who embraced it, it seemed like it was legislative by letter to the editor, and that didn't seem right to me. So I don't know. That's the question. Perhaps someone can answer. I felt bad that you criticized, Dr. Fahey, Mr. Wells' research because I thought it was fairly deep and he made a lot of effort to present it to the public. I think the research that was lacking was the research of the group or person who was presenting or asking for our public space to display those state signs with, with the hashtag One Nation. Or perhaps more research would, would be expected from the government person or group who accepted that request for space, political space, as it turns out, as we see it, you know, in our city. So the law, as Mr. Wells has repeated, says, no politics on public space. That's it. Neither way, neither, neither side. And I think that in these times where we have such polarization, that it's especially important that we give no appearance of partisanship, even if it's not there. But even just the appearance of it, I think, should be avoided. Also, in defense of Mr. Wells, he did not ask for the signs to be removed. Remember when he spoke last week? He said simply kills, you know, the white paint or some duct tape. Or tonight, he even suggested perhaps another thing to put over it, but something that wouldn't cause what's being caused. One more thing about the editorial response. Mr. Curtis actually was concerned about the fact that hashtag Miami Springs took you directly to miamisprings.com. And I guess my question would be that if that would have raised that red flag for that connection, why not the red flag for hashtag One Nation? So that should probably be addressed in my own letter to the editor, and you can expect it will be coming. So I applaud all of you because I think we all want unity. But I think that without transparency and without accountability, it can't happen. It's not going to happen. And so I think it's critical for you, council members, that you maintain the trust of all of our citizens. So because trust matters, truth matters, facts matter, and... This is my visual aid here. I have several of these saying facts, truth, et cetera. But I think for this occasion... Oh, I just moved that. Thank you again for listening, and I hope that all of us in combination will strike some chord among you to discuss this further. And I hope that one of you, I guess the procedure is that you request that it be put on the next agenda. So I think that democracy takes work. And apparently, like these two weeks in between, and then the Gazette being only on a monthly basis now, makes it even more difficult. So, but thank you for your hard work. As I look at you and you look at me, I know that you're sincere. So we're going to figure this out together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that T-shirt is from a former English teacher, right, Marsha? He's a solid English teacher, words matter. That's right. Okay, another English teacher, Kathy Doyle, Miami Springs English teacher.
Society of English majors, huh?
And I'm going to promise to be really brief, okay? I just want to, number one, congratulate all of you and thank you for, you know, the time consumption. I mean, to devote yourselves to our service is exemplary. And I just want to preface all that by saying God bless you all and, you know, you do a good job in general. Okay. I just want to qualify a couple of things because one of the contentions last week was that nobody brought this up last year. What was the problem? And I just want to point out, I don't know if Tom's here or not, but I'm going to confide in you all that, you know, last year probably was one of the most contentious times in our, in social and political lives, okay? And when the flags went up, I hate to say it, but flags have been hijacked in some respects by some people and used more as weapons than as unifying forces. So when I first heard about the flags, I said, oh, how pretty and how, what a nice idea. And then I went and I was the first one probably who noticed because I mentioned it to a couple of people that I know about the hashtag because I went home and searched. And sure enough, what came up? We all know now. Okay. I was, I didn't say anything because I thought, I'm not going to, you know, this is inflammatory and I have a life to live and I'm, so I didn't say anything until I was approached by a person emailed, or texted, I believe, by one of our part-time reporters for the Gazette and who wanted to do a story about the flags. And, and this person has called me before when there's been issues of education or, you know, tax week for this school system or whatever, for a comment. And I said, I, I think the flags are a lovely idea. I cannot go on record as saying anything complimentary about it because I'm very concerned about the hashtag and what it potentially represents. And I said, and I forwarded this person the website. And I suggested that maybe an investigation should occur. Well, the story came out and it was all praising and, you know, our good Miami Springs, our little, you know, town, everything's fine. Nothing said. So I don't know if that was ever, I presume it was never shared with Tom, but I have since shared that story with him. So he knows that I did indeed broach it to a reporter. That said, I just want to request that, that this council do consider some kind of resolution for this, that it needs to be put on the agenda. Because a dismissive and condescending letter in the Gazette by one of the council members is not a substitute for thorough discussion of the legality and the wisdom of allowing this hashtag to remain on the signs. My husband, okay, who's in social sciences and didn't want to come tonight because he didn't want to get his, his blood pressure high, sat today for the first time and Googled the hashtag. He came up with four pages of references and most of them directed you directly to the Karl Rove website. Yes, there's a very, there's a quote unquote extremely conservative group in Australia. There's another one in Great Britain, but most of the, most of the results. So I'm saying to myself, okay, we know, we learned too much maybe than we wanted to know about hashtags recently. But basically, they're used to attract attention to political ideas and to companies and businesses. Why should there any, be any hashtags at all on city property? Miami Springs should be represented by its government website, period. And I don't see any reason, I, I think you should recommend not just banning the slash One Nation, but I think we should just make an addition to the code or the, for signs, just, there, there will be no hashtags displayed on public property in Miami Springs. Because unless you can think of a really good reason why we would ever need one, that would eliminate the problem for the future as well as the present. And Karen, you know, if we want to talk about our city, give the website for the city. And then when you Google Miami Springs, you won't go to dot com, you'll go to the website dot gov and find out all about our city and whatever needs to be done. That's just my suggestion. So with that, I would just recommend those two things, okay? That you do cover the signs, that you, number one, put it on the agenda. Number two, that you decide to do something about the signs that have the dot, the dot, the slash, hashtag, slash, whatever, hashtag One Nation. And then... And then you further look into just banning hashtags. Simple, simple procedure keeps everybody happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Maldonado.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. And first off, thank you for all your services. Great to see all you. I've never been to a council meeting before, but I'm, I'm actually, this is a follow-up from last two weeks. My husband was here regarding a civil violation notice that we received for a hedge. So so somebody took his information. You said you were going to get back with him. I don't know if it was the city clerk or, but no one, no one got in touch with him. But this issue was dealt with several years ago and it's come up again. And I want to make sure that there is consistency in applying the regulation because I did a perusal, just, just drove around and took some photos of other folks, other homeowners with similar hedges. So I'd like to know if, or if there's any way that I can know what other homeowners have been cited for the hedge, you know, for the hedge issue. I can give you copies of these if you'd like before I leave. How do I find that out? And I might be, I think Miguel is here. There might be, I might be joined here with some other comments about this, but so I don't know what to do now. So you know, how do I proceed with this issue?
Okay. Our city clerk can help you with that, but I do want to apologize. I was going to, because I'm your neighbor. And I was, I've knocked on your door a few times but haven't caught you. And I had told our city manager, in fact, that I would respond. In fact, your husband and I have talked about this in the past, so he knows, but I, that I would reach out to him. So I apologize about that. I have knocked on your door two or three times when, you know, I'm around the block and you weren't there to talk to you about this. Okay, so our city clerk will give you the information, will connect you with the information that you're requesting about other hedges and, you know, whatever we're doing with that. And I promise I will walk around the block to discuss it with you. Nor, we, we don't respond at the meetings to open forum, but I just wanted to let you know it's not anyone else's fault. It's mine.
Okay.
Okay.
So would you like copies of?
Yes, you can give it to the city clerk, please, and she'll pass it out.
Is this going to be for everybody in the city or is this just one hedge, one time? Because this happened, you were here, Bob. Few years, Bob. And it's not just hedges then. If you got a fence in the front, you got to take it out. If the alleys, you got to take down the fences too. You got to take your hedges down too. Because it's anything obstructing a sidewalk where there's road.
That's correct.
Okay. And the county tried to do this and you know what? It didn't work. Paul Gables tried to do it. It didn't work. And, you know, you have a hedge in your front yard that's in violation, Mayor.
No.
Yes, you do. And I haven't gone by, no? It's three and a half feet?
Yep.
No, it's beyond three and a half feet, but I'm not calling you out. But I'm just telling you, everybody in the city about ninety percent.
It to three and a half, but that's.
Ninety percent have hedges in the front. I would stand to make a lot of money because I have a landscape business, but I don't think it's right. I think it just takes a little bit common sense for somebody who's backing up, somebody who's walking down to keep your eyes open.
Let's.
Just like riding your bicycle on the sidewalk or on the street, you're always looking to see if somebody's coming out. So is this going to be an ordinance for the hedges now?
Right now, because it's a, a public hearing, all you can do is address it to us. And then please speak with our city clerk or city staff afterwards. But I'll be happy if you reach out to me also to speak with you privately about this. Or if you want to stay after the meeting.
I just wanted to know if it's going to be in your ordinance.
It's in, or it's.
Something new that's going to be applied because the last time it, it just, it didn't pan out for the city.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I just told your wife that I said I would contact you and I've knocked on your door two or three times and missed you. And you know I live around you. So it's my fault that you weren't, because I said I would, I would contact you and speak with you directly about it, okay? And I promise I will.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, let me put my glasses so I can read your smaller handwriting. Juan Hervis. Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Kathleen Fleishman.
May I?
Of course.
Kathleen Fleishman, eight-ten Pine Chris Drive. First and foremost, I want to congratulate the mayor and council, and thank you very much for your willingness to serve in what can sometimes be challenging and sometimes thankless, but thank you for agreeing to represent the city. And also want to thank my friend, Mr. Alonso, a great city manager. So obviously, the big topic tonight was and is about the legality, about whether the these signs are political, whether they affect the municipal code. And so that is something that I hope all of you will put your heads together and research. But be that as it may, the, the Dr. Fajette, in his letter, which I read, said rather patronizingly, I might say, Walter, but to say, do the research. So I thought, okay, I'm, I'm going to do the research because honestly, I've never heard of hashtag One Nation. I'm not even sure what hashtag means. But with respect to previous speakers, and I applaud them for their research and articulation of this situation. It is then a, a stepping stone to something that gets you to the next site. And so the things that I found out about One Nation pretty much curled my toes. And this is now, since 2015, taken over by Mr. Karl Rove. And it is extreme. It is actually known, it was previously part of Crossroads and the GPS governmental, exactly what they call that, grassroots policy strategies. It is also this five oh one C three, C, actually five oh one C four organization is an advocacy group for instructing people to reach out to policymakers in Washington, DC. Now, if that doesn't sound political, what else is? And that's what we call them, political action committees, PACs. So we all know about PACs. Then we've got dark money. So 2015, and unfortunately, thanks to the Citizens United ruling, dark money has just become pervasive. So I think somebody, I think it was Marcia who brought up the fact, well, what about the people who set up these flags? You know, the old remark is follow the money. And so perhaps we should do that and find out. But the crux of it is, and I don't really care politically if one is right of center or left of center. That's a personal opinion and that is our, each of our rights as Americans. We can have those opinions. But if we have a municipal code that's a code that says no political interaction or advancement or partisanship, then that's the issue we have to address. I thank Mr. Wells for bringing this up. I don't believe that we were in a frenzy. None of the people that I have spoken to, and many of them are not here tonight, but nobody really was worked up into a frenzy. So, you know, words matter. So we'll have to rethink that. But what does matter is abiding by the rules and the regulations. We are a citizen, we are a country of laws and, and we must abide by them. So if we have that ruling, if we have a code, then let's find out and, and do it. The perception. There's also a solution because I love those flags. At first, when I saw them, I just, I was awestruck and I, I said, who did this great job? This is just beautiful. And I'm sorry that it has been tainted by this hashtag One Nation. Could have been, you know, if somebody was impressed to put a hashtag on there with no political agenda, why didn't they just say hashtag Miami Springs in the heart of it all? You know, or City of Miami Springs or if, if that's even, well, that can't be. I, well, I don't know if that's allowed or not. I don't know. But let's do our research on this end as well as the citizenry has been doing their research on the, on the other end. And I think Mr. Wells solution is a good one. We love the flags. We want to keep them. We're all feeling very patriotic and unified in that. So just take off that, that little hashtag One Nation and be, and, and that seems like a solution that Solomon might come up with. So I hope that you all give that, your attention, put it on an agenda, let, you know, and, and let's see what you all find out about that. So again, thank you very much to each and every one of you. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, that ends the public forum. So the next item is the approval of council minutes, and I'll take a motion.
So the chair, motion to move items six A and six B.
Second.
To. Erica, sorry, call the roll, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Report from boards and commissions. We don't have any public hearings. We don't have any. Okay. Item nine A and B, the consent agenda.
I have Tammy's on Zoom tonight and she's going to be reading the two items for you.
Yes. Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council that the City of Miami Springs, Florida approving an agreement with Advanced Data Solutions, Inc. for document digitizing services, utilizing the terms and conditions of the City of Tamarack contract pursuant to section thirty-one eleven E five of the city code, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date. Item nine B, a resolution by Mayor and City of Miami Springs Council of Miami Springs approving the issuance of a work order to Bromello, Azure Meal and Partners, Inc. for phase one of the Oakwood Drive Stormwater Improvements Project, consisting of surveying and preliminary engineering in an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen and providing for an effective date.
Motion to move these items?
Yeah, motion to move.
Second.
Erica, call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Best?
Hi.
Council, Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Old business, no. New, new business. We'll move to item eleven A. We have an ordinance of first reading.
This is an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida amending section thirty-five dash fifty-three, contributions of the Police and Fire and Pension Plan of the City's Code of Ordinances pertaining to monthly retirement benefits, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. This ordinance is on first reading, like the next one on the agenda. So we'll have a public hearing on second reading.
Motion to move?
Through the chair, motion to move eleven A, please.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Erica, call the, the vote, please. Vice Mayor Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahet?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Item eleven B, ordinance first reading.
This is an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, sunsetting and dissolving the Code Review Board, the Memorial Committee, the Gulf and Country Club Advisory Board, and the Architectural Review Board by repealing Article Three, Sections thirty-two dash ten through thirty-two dash sixteen, Article Four, Sections thirty-two dash twenty through thirty-two dash twenty-two, Article Nine, Art, Sections, I'm sorry, Article fourteen. My apologies on the Roman numerals. Article fourteen, Sections thirty-two dash ninety-two through thirty-two dash ninety-eight, and Article sixteen, Section thirty-two dash one hundred of Chapter Thirty-two, Boards, Commissions, Committees of the City's Code of Ordinances. Amending Article Seven, Charter Review Board, Sections thirty-two dash fifty through thirty-two dash fifty-eight, relating to appointments to and procedures for the Charter Review Board, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, if you'd like, I can provide a summary of what this ordinance does because as, as you see in the title, it is a fairly lengthy title, and I'm happy to explain the effect of it.
Yes, please do.
So at the last commit, council meeting, it was requested that we bring back legislation to dissolve certain boards and committees that had not met in several years. So for a long time, the council has been asked to appoint members to these boards that do not necessarily ever meet. So with the clerk's office and the manager's office, we looked at what boards had met, which ones had not. You had that in your agenda packet at the last meeting. And so based on that, we realized that these boards had not met. And so it was appropriate to repeal the code sections that created them and thereby dissolve those boards. So that's what the first half of the ordinance does. The second half of the ordinance relates to the Charter Review Board. And although that board has not met in recent years, and I realized that it wasn't even included in the list of committees and appointments because no one is apparently currently appointed to that board. Despite that, I felt that it was probably a better approach to leave that board in because it does relate with the city's charter. And so in an effort to streamline the process and get that board in sort of a cyclical working group fashion, I added, I instead amended that ordinance to provide that that board would meet basically on a, every, it was a Scrivener's error on my part. It should be every six years is what I put into the ordinance. However, that's something that council may approve, may say we don't want to take any of these changes or we want to make revisions to it. So I leave that to your legislative discretion. But as proposed, what's in the agenda and it's on Exhibit B, it's page eleven of thirteen of the ordinance. What it proposes is that at the first regular meeting in December of this year and thereafter, every fifth year, it should read sixth year, the city council would appoint and fund the Charter Review Board. Currently, the board is just in the code and there's no real designation of when the board should meet. So many cities have it as part of their charter that this board meets on a cyclical basis. So some cities choose to do this every five years, every seven years, every ten years, whatever they have chosen for their city that works for them. So that's where that language came from. And then thereafter, that review board would meet every forty-five days. I'm sorry. It would meet forty-five days after being appointed, such that they would effectively be appointed in December of this year and meet beginning in January of 2022. The board would then be tasked, as they currently are, with reviewing the charter and seeing what revisions, if any, should be made. If the board were to feel that a revision should be made, then they would provide that recommendation to the city council for your review. And if the city council agrees, then you would submit that revision to the voters, presumably at the November 2022 election. And this is the process that would take place on that cyclical basis that you would select. That's not to say that this is the only way that the charter can be amended. It can be amended by, the council has the discretion to put a charter revision on the ballot. It can also be done by Citizens Initiative. But this is just a formal process that sort of keeps you in this cyclical, on-track fashion to review. But this is just a formal process that sort of keeps you in this cyclical on-track fashion to review the charter. That's basically it. So I'm happy to answer any questions. As I said, for the, for the, for item eleven A, this is an ordinance on first reading. So we'll have a public hearing and hear from the public at the next council meeting. But I'm happy to answer any questions this evening.
Through the chair. Heidi, I saw this, and I read the backup on it and everything, and I, I think it's, I think this is just too much together here. Second point, relative to the Charter Review Board, I've been up here fourteen years. I've never even heard of the Charter Review Board. Nor have I ever appointed anybody to it. So that's the first thing. That's the part two. The part one, we just heard tonight about a hedge issue. That, to me, is very much of a code review problem. In the past, some of these boards, granted, they haven't met that often recently, and you can blame the pandemic for at least a year of that. But some of the boards haven't met even prior to that for a period of time. But I see some that aren't on, that didn't make the list, that to me make no sense at all to even have as board, such as the Ecology Board. That's not on the list. You got the Code Review Board is, the Golf and Country Club is. The Golf and Country Club, that particular board is seated with some very influential people in this town relative to the sport of golf and, and the activities that go on at the recreation, at the, at the country club itself. Those people were very instrumental in a lot of things that have been put together at that country club over the years. And I think that might be a mistake. I think the Code Review Board, to remove that is a mistake. We had an issue tonight, the hedges, case in point. The Memorial Committee, while true, they haven't met either for quite a while. We're on the threshold of rebuilding the war memorial on Curtis Parkway, the American Legion is, through the, in conjunction with the city and cahoots with the city. So I, I don't know if I can support this the way it's written at, at, at the moment. I'd like to further discuss this, particularly with the manager and possibly some other members of staff before I can support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Ken, I know we, we sent out an email to members of these boards and inviting them if they wanted to be here. Is there anyone, I know they didn't sign up, but is there anyone from any of these boards that wants to speak? I'll let you speak, even though it's not a public hearing. Okay, just wanted to make sure we did that.
Mayor, if I might, I have one more thing to say. There. The Architectural Review Board, now that, that, that maybe should make the list. Because that, that was more contentious than anything else, particularly with some of the different zoning issues that we faced over the last few years. And they, if anything, they caused more problems than, than fixes through that period of time. Some of, some of you may remember that. So, so that, that in itself. The other thing is, I can appreciate to, to an extent where the city's coming from in this. There is staff costing involved every time a board meets. And they meet almost, what, every, almost every week, there's a different, different boards meeting, Tuesdays, Mondays, Thursdays, and sitting right up here where we are right now, and discussing the issues. They, they suppose, they're, by chart, by the charter, they're supposed to serve as watchdogs, watchdogs for the citizens, for the citizenry, in terms of bringing new and new things that, that we, that we don't bring, or that you don't give us to bring and to, and to legislate on. So, so I believe that there's some value in these. I don't think there's value in all of them, but some of them that have made the list, I think there is some value in them.
Any?
I have a question. Yeah, so I'm one of the newbies, and I was a little confused because I thought, and maybe I misheard, Madam Chair of the last meeting, that part of the workshop that we're going to have in May, we were going to discuss goals for the council and also the boards and commissions. I thought that was part of the.
No, the workshop is, is for goals of the council and strategic planning. This is this one. But let me just ask Heidi, is it okay that we discuss this now, or do we need a motion before we continue?
You, you can discuss it.
Okay.
The Roberts Rules would say, make a motion, second, and then have discussion.
But let's go ahead and see if then we want to go forward with the motion. All right. Councilman Vasquez, is there anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Well, if you, if you're looking for a motion, you have one, Mayor.
Pardon me?
I said, if you're looking for a motion to further discuss it, you have one for me.
Okay.
Motion to discuss?
All right, second.
It could be a motion to approve.
That was a question.
Motion to discuss.
He's moving.
It's just to discuss.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Councilman Vasquez, did you have more? That you wanted to add right now?
Confused.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Following the Roberts Rules awards, it's a motion to discuss. Usually, it's a motion to, to approve.
Yeah.
And then you have discussion, you can vote it down, but.
Correct.
Am I correct?
That's correct, Mr. Vasquez.
Yeah, but through the chair, but I think, I think what we have here is, is a different animal because you have an agenda item with, 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 with verbiage. And we want to do something else with it, so.
So to clarify, procedurally, you can make a motion to approve the ordinance. And oftentimes, our council members will say for discussion because they want to make it clear that it's only for discussion. But the reality is, is you can make the motion to approve the item, it can be seconded, then you can discuss. And if after the discussion, the person who made the motion wants to withdraw their motion, they can. But again, I'm happy to, I haven't responded to all of the questions. But I'm happy to do so during the discussion. And any feedback that you'd like to give, we can certainly take that into, into account for second reading, assuming that it passes for second reading.
So if I can say through the chair, I would like to move to table this matter in respect to the Charter Review Board. I did speak with Heidi as well, and I think it's an important board to consider to keep, even though we haven't used it in a long time, but matters do come up. And I'd rather have some sort of, something to lean on so that we can make those appropriate changes, should it come up. So I don't know what the proper procedure is here to, to keep that board.
Mayor, if I could just jump in, my understanding, Heidi, is that we're not, we're not sunsetting or dissolving the Charter Review Board. That's a separate issue, right? The Charter Review Board is one that we don't really have anybody on it at the moment. And the second half of this ordinance is proposing an independent kind of cycle for them to be appointed and serve. And, and also it would give them a timetable, a more proactive timetable, where they would review the charter and make recommendations to us, which is not what's happening now because we don't even have anybody on the Charter Review Board. So that's different, and I think that's why she, she made that clarification that there's kind of two parts to this ordinance. There's the sunsetting part of it, and then what we're trying to do with the, with the Charter Review Board. So I don't, I don't know if that, if that kind of clarifies for you, because I think it sounded like you were saying.
I thought we were, I thought we were in a process of elimination.
No, no, that's the second half of the ordinance. I did, I did want to just comment that I feel like I kind of agree with Councilman Best that I feel like we need to kind of think this through a little more. I know that when I read the list, I, I had questions about who was on and who wasn't. I know that something like the Architectural Review Board, which, which I, is supposed to like give architectural design recommendations, and I know that in, in speaking to staff, that that's something that, a lot of that happens in Chris's shop in terms of like compliance, but there are some things in terms of recommendations. I know we have a lot of residents that, myself included, who care about kind of the, the style and motif of, of, of things that are constructed within the city so that it matches. And, and I know that you can have an ad hoc committee that can, that you can convene if something were related to architectural design recommendations comes up. But I also, it strikes me that I don't, I don't think there's a cost to having the members on the board. Maybe, maybe there is. I don't know. I just, I've got, I've got a bunch of questions. I also see that that's a board that has vacancies, and I, I served previously on the Educational Advisory Board, and I remember we very often, there wasn't a quorum because, because seats were vacant, because people weren't nominating, so then they weren't meeting. And so I, I just, I kind of agree with Councilman Best that, that we probably need to kind of think this through and maybe talk to staff some more about, about this.
Through the chair, I, I thank you, Councilman. If, if it's appropriate, and if you consent, I'd like to make a motion, and we strike this item from the agenda, and I prefer the review.
Before we do that, let me just explain my thoughts on it, and this is something that I brought to the agenda. When I was elected to the council four years ago, I was asked to appoint persons to these boards. The Ecology Board meets regularly. The Educational Advisory Board meets regularly. There are several boards that meet regularly, and they meet here, and they're doing a great job. But there were several boards that, when I looked, because when I asked four years ago, I said, okay, when, how often do they meet? What do they do and all this? And it turns out, well, they haven't met in five, six years. And I said, why would I appoint someone to a board and say, you're on the board, and the board, I mean, these people may not even live in Miami Springs anymore, and they're listed on here. And if the board hasn't met in five or six years, and this was four years ago, some of these boards still haven't met. So why are we, and if you look on our website, it says we have sixteen advisory boards. I, I really, it bothers me, it's, it's not a big issue, we can not do this, but it bothers me to say we're doing things that we're not doing. If you look at the Architectural Review Board on our website, it says we meet regularly to discuss architectural issues in the Springs. We invite you to, to join us every Wednesday at the beginning of the month. And they haven't met in seven years. So I have no problem having boards, advisory boards, but let's use them. We have a wealth of professional expertise in our community. We need to tap into it. And to say we're doing stuff and we're not is, and, and I can tell you with the Architectural Review Board, when the whole issue was going on with the downtown, the, you know, the one Curtis Parkway or whatever, that the theater property, I wanted to run it by their Architectural Review Board, and the council didn't want to because they said that it never meets. It hasn't met. We don't even know if they're active. It takes too long to. So I think what's more effective with those kinds of issues, when something comes up, is to appoint a task force or an ad hoc committee where we reach out when we know we have something that we'd like, the input of the citizency, citizenry. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Of, of reaching out and appointing, and again, I'll bring up the example that we did recently with the Senior Center, with the Art and Public Places for the Senior Center, which we each appointed a member to, for, to decide on, to work on the committee. We weren't involved with the committee. At the end of the time that they did their process, they presented to the council what their recommendations were, and they did a beautiful job. And in those kinds of things, and I'm not talking about all the boards, the reason that some of the boards are on here, and speaking with Heidi, were the ones that haven't met, to tell somebody, you know, it's kind of a prestigious thing to say, I want to point you to a board, but if it has no meaning to it, then really, why are we taking up their time? And there is a cost involved because our city clerk's office is responsible for maintaining these boards, and they're responsible for doing the upkeep and, you know, the, you know, even asking us, following up on us to appoint people to boards and this vacancy is open. So I have no problem with leaving this for another time. I think we need more discussion. I think Councilman Best's recommendation that these are two separate things, the code, the Charter Review Board, which should probably be on its own. The reason for the Charter Review Board is to review things in our charter, our charters, like our constitution, that are outdated and something similar that happened. An example of something that happened was when we had two council members who resigned this past year. Our charter did not agree with the county elections process for, you know, for, I guess, replacement of those. And so the charter's saying we have to do it within a certain number of days, the, the county elections, it's not possible. Can we live without the Charter Review Board? Yes. I, I don't know that that's even necessary because we've gone this far without it, and probably, like our city attorney said, if something that we need to address, we can address it directly, you know, without having to have the whole Charter Review Board in process. So I have no problem with, you know, that being a separate ordinance or not even dealing with it. But I'd like you, and we'll, and we'll continue this discussion because I don't think we're ready to vote on this, but I'd like you to consider that with these boards, the ones that are meeting regularly or doing their job, probably, we do need to make them more effective, make them feel like they're more of the process, because right now, these boards are meeting kind of, we're in parallel universes. They meet, and we meet, and, you know, we don't even talk. We should have them make a, a report to us once a year about, you know, what they've done, and be sure to reach out to us with their recommendations, any recommendations that they have, so that we can consider implementing them. And also, we need to give the advisory boards work. If there's input that we want from these talented members of our community, if you, if you, if you think about the people that we have in our community of just professionals, it's amazing, the wealth, and, you know, let's tap into them for the, the issues that, you know, that they can help us with. So. Anyway, the ones that are on here on, for sunsetting are the ones that even the recreational, the Golf and Recreation Committee, it may be prestigious names, but if they haven't met in seven years, you know.
I think, through the chair, I, I think that that it's a slippery, it's a slippery slope to eliminate that board. Yes, fine, everything's going great at the golf course right now. Paul Adele's doing a bang-up job with Lori. Place has never looked better. The, the entertainment side with Patrick Kimmich is, is really doing well. We're in tall cotton right now, but we're not going to be forever. And so we go ahead and eliminate a board, and then something goes awry, and we have nothing.
And perhaps, Councilman, the solution to that would be to require a mandatory meeting once a year? For them to get to know each other, sit, and so that at least we know that these members are still rethorbid living and breathing in Miami Springs and.
I, I know that, I know that, and William will bear me out on this. A couple of years ago, I think it was, this came up, it didn't come up to the point of an agenda, but it came up for a discussion.
We had a workshop on it.
Had a workshop, that's right.
And they were supposed to meet once a year.
And, right, right. And then, then, then the, the virus came, and then it just kept going like, like that. And here we are today. The first cleanup action I think we need to do is get, is get these boards filled.
Yeah.
Because there are an awful lot of vacancies. I thank the clerk for sending that out recently, by the way, and all that. And by the way, I need to speak to you on, on one of those because I had appointed somebody for one of them. Let's clean that up. And even if, and a couple of the people on the Golf Advisory Board have spoken to me over the last two or three weeks, actually, and said, when are we going to have a meeting? When are we, I says, I, you know.
So perhaps let's.
There has to be issues. That's the problem. And, 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 you know, it came up at one point that a lot of these boards are just inventing issues that weren't even necessary to the city to, to, to keep the thing going. I remember that period of time. So this is, this is good that this is coming up right now, but let's fix it right. Let's fix it right, and not eliminate some things that really should not be eliminated, in my view.
Perhaps not eliminate them, but require them to.
Sure.
So that.
Correct.
Even that they know who else is on the board and that they have, and a minimum once a, a year, meeting of these boards.
Yes.
So Mayor, there's, there's a few different ways to address this. And I'm, I'm happy to go whichever way that the council wishes. If you have boards that you wish to dissolve, and you're certain of that, we can take this ordinance as is and just delete those boards that, if, if there's a board here that you feel should remain, we can just take that out from the ones that would be sunsetted. And as far as, so I'll stick to just that portion of it, the ones that are being repealed. If you were to approve this as is, let's say, and you repeal all of these boards, there's another way of, of making boards. You can adopt a resolution establishing a board at any time that the council desires. And in that resolution, you can set forth the parameters of what that board is required to do, what their duties are, what they're charged with reporting back to you, and the recommendations that you're trying to get from them, or the studies. And, and then you can just appoint them that way. So it doesn't need to be in your city code. A lot of cities do it through resolution because it's not this complex Byzantine-type work of doing it through an ordinance. So I think that there's sort of a more streamlined and efficient way of dealing with boards. And I find that resolutions tend to be very helpful when it comes to boards, just from a, from a procedural standpoint. If, so if there's boards that you feel for sure you would like to repeal, and you're ready to make that decision tonight, then you can give me that feedback. then you can give me that feedback and we can bring that back for second reading. And that way we sort of remember for, I know there's new people on the board, on the council. Ordinances are read twice, ordinances are read twice. So, you know, if we don't do anything tonight, that's okay. That's within the council's discretion. But if then you want to bring it back, we're dealing with this at a second and perhaps third meeting. So just keep that in mind. So if you're ready to make a decision, great. If not, that's okay, too.
Through the chair, a quick comment. I wanted, I want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing this up because I think that the conversation, just the brief conversation we've had has been helpful. I think that's kind of like what was missing because I felt like the solution, we came up with the solution before we had, we had really kind of addressed the problem. So I, I want to thank you for that because I agree with, with, with just about everything that you said. But it also strikes me that there's, that you even brought up some other solutions that, that aren't, aren't covered by, by this ordinance. So, yeah, I'm, I'm open to, to moving forward and looking at this more deeply. And I think that now is a good time because we have a new council, we have people that are new. And, and I think that this should be something, you know, that gets discussed a bit, a bit further. But, but I do think that, I don't, I don't want you to think that not voting on this or not, not, you know, approving this ordinance as written here is a, is a, you know, a repudiation of what, what you're trying to do because I think, I think you make really good points. And I think it, you've highlighted some things that we really need to look at to help, help this run better.
Okay, so I guess there's another possibility here, too. I'm sorry, Councilman Best, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate a point that you made, but I think is also very important. It seems to me, as a new person on the council, that, and I don't know that proactive or more responsibly or however, whatever the description is that, that the council needs to be connected more to boards. And we have people, they don't meet, there's some, some of that responsibility, I guess, is ours to, or to be in touch or because I'm someone that wants to be involved in having some of these boards meet and, you know, nominating people and get them and do whatever we can to, for them to be more active. And you mentioned several that have been meeting regularly. And I have to, pardon me, I have allergies and I've been coughing up here all evening. And I want you to know it's, it's allergies and it's seasonal allergies. And I took a medication that I should not have taken before I came here. And that's why I'm coughing and I had to step out for that. But anyway, I just wanted to reiterate that point because I think it's important. Whatever we decide, as the attorney mentioned, on when it be sunset some or others. I, I, I wanted to really be part of that discussion because though I'm new to the council, I'm not new to complex organizations and boards and advisory boards and things of that nature. And I totally agree with you, Mayor. We've got an incredible treasure trove of talented people in this city. And if we, if they haven't been tapped, maybe they haven't been asked, or, or maybe some people signed up and there were no meetings, so they got frustrated. But we've got a lot of folks in this town that I think are willing to serve. So I'm in support of energizing this and if we have to sunset one or two, whatever, you know, we can do that as well. But I'm not sure what the procedure is right now, but, and where Bob's motion was.
And I'm guessing one of the things we can do is, and like Councilman Best said, is to delay this, add it to the workshop that we're having a workshop to address things.
I think that's a good idea.
Workshop, if we, hopefully we'll get everything done that we need to do if we can tack it onto there and and have a little more thought. But again, I, I'm all for tapping into our residents to be on our advisory boards, but let's really use the advisory boards then. Make them mean something and, and get that communication back and forth and particularly the ones that are meeting that we, we are hearing from them and giving them work to, you know, if there's things that.
Giving them more.
Using them to help us research information or, or to give us recommendations on ways that they think we can make the city more effective and more productive and provide better, better services.
If I may, I would highly recommend that we keep that workshop just geared to our goals and objectives.
Okay.
Because that's going to take up most of our time.
Yeah, this. This could be separate.
All right.
I agree with the manager on that.
Let's table this. I think nobody's ready to, I, I think one thing to please keep in mind from what Heidi said is, and possibly what Councilman Best was saying, is there are two different ones of the charter review board. If we're going to keep that or not, we've been doing, like he said, without it for a long, long time. And we can continue to do that. Some cities, what they do is they automatically set a certain, every so many years, that there'll be a committee set up to review the charter and kind of clean things up and make recommendations, but we don't have to go there. So that might be a whole process, you know, that we don't even want to tackle. We'll just keep kicking the can further down the road in that, in that sense. And with the other boards, give it some more thought as to, you know, do we really, like right now, for those of you who don't have persons on your boards, you're going to be making phone calls to residents and say, I'd like to appoint you to this board because I have a vacancy to fill. By the way, they don't meet and they haven't met in years.
Yeah.
It's just, and other ones, no, other ones are vacancies that we do need to fill because if the meet, if they are meeting, they should have a representative. You know, one of your representatives there. So, you know, both ways, but. So Heidi, if we just table this, this means we'll just bring it up as an agenda item later.
Whenever, whenever council directs us to bring it back, we can bring it back.
It won't come back for the next meeting automatically. It'll be whenever, does that seem reasonable?
Absolutely.
With everyone?
Correct. So.
Do you want to, through the chair, you want to run with the motion that I made to strike it from the agenda tonight?
To strike it from the agenda, but then what we're asking is for all of the council members to go ahead and appoint persons to these boards.
Yes, including the charter review board.
Okay.
All right.
And just to clarify, is this also going to be on the workshop agenda discussion?
No, we should keep that separate, I think.
I'm sorry. So it's not going to be on the workshop agenda?
No, no.
Okay, I had understood differently.
As William said, we've probably got a full plate for that.
You absolutely do.
Through the chair, this is probably enough material here ju- just in itself to warrant another special meeting.
Well, we had, we had that workshop four years ago to do this and we came up with recommendations that they would meet regularly, that they would, but it never happened.
Yeah, it was, it was in the process of getting Oregon, and then the virus hit, remember?
So I don't have to discuss it tonight. I'm happy to speak with you each individually about it. But as I mentioned before, there's other ways of dealing with boards. And I think that the city has historically had this code section, an entire chapter devoted to boards. Oftentimes what I see that's very efficient is a chapter dedicated to just general procedures for how boards are established. And then when you want to create a board and basically activate, you pass a resolution saying we want to create the Miami Springs Vision Board. And that we expect this board to do A, B, C, and D, and we'd like your report and recommendations by a date certain. And that way, it's, it's sort of, you, you don't have all of these standing boards. Some cities do have those standing boards, like you do. And there's, you can continue to do that, but sort of taking it out of the scheme of having it in the code, it makes it a little easier when you have these sorts of situations that you want to move along.
So in that case, are you saying all of the boards would be taken out of the code or just the ones that are, that have not met?
I, I, that would be, I think my recommendation would be to just have all of the boards out of the code and then just have a resolution saying, you know, these are our city boards, this is, these are their duties. And, and that way it's very streamlined.
And then we could put in there, they must meet once a year.
Correct.
Minimum, and then once a year, and we could stagger, not have all the reports once, but.
Correct.
Say in January, we have the report from the Educational Advisory Committee and in February, you know.
And something, those sorts of procedures, I would probably leave in, generally, I would leave those sorts of things in your code, so to speak. Like each board is going to have a minimum of five members, let's say, and the boards will meet, you know, at least once a year or as, or more frequently upon call of the chair and things like that. But then the actual specific duties of each board and when you expect to hear from them. If you're expecting an actual report and recommendation, then I would have that in the resolution and leave the ordinance to just have just general procedures.
Okay.
Actually, through the chair, some, some of these boards and, and you've, you've read some of the minutes that the clerk sends us from, from these actual board meetings. There's some good stuff that comes out, particularly code enforcement, adjustment for sure. They got one coming up next Monday, right? I believe. That's some good reading and you, you pick up an awful lot of stuff going on in this town for most.
And, and we certainly are not in any way suggesting to remove or sunset those boards. Code enforcement board or the planning and zoning boards, those, those are all staying.
Quasi judicial, essentially, right?
All the boards that are meeting are doing an excellent job.
But those two in particular, those three.
Right. And I think Councilman Best is right. What has happened in the past, in past councils is a, a lot of the decisions that should be made probably by a board and a recommendation to you have actually been made at the council.
Yes, that's right.
I know, for example, Eric Ritchie and Targum, I think he's part of the memorial committee. And he used to tell me, you know, the memorial committee never meets and we're the ones that are supposed to send the recommendation to council. Who to pull on the wall fame, you know, like for example, the presentation we heard today, that's something that you could direct to the memorial committee and say, come up with a list of seniors.
That's right.
That would benefit. Well, what's happened in the past is that a lot of these boards, I mean, set their own agenda.
Right, that's right.
Because they have no, no.
No guidance.
Counsel on what to look for.
This is, I think you've just made a really good suggestion that if we're going to keep these boards for now, the memorial committee. In fact, we just had a presentation about a memorial and requesting names. This would be a great item to pass on to them to help them make a recommendation to us.
Right. And for the America, the war memorial on Curtis Parkway, that the Legion is in process of, and that's going to be a major project. So there's some things on the horizon, you know, that's what kind of jumped off the page at me when I saw some of those boards on there, I saw the agenda first.
Okay, so are we leaving this then, tabling it and we'll bring it back another time?
Yep.
Okay.
Fine with me.
All right. The next agenda item, I need to find my glasses. Other business discussion of the Fourth of July celebration, item 12A.
Yes, you have in your packet, a memo from Omar Luna and from Caitlin Smith. They're both here and you guys come up. Let me read this to you and then we can go to a Q and A. The Recreation Department would like to recommend the following event to occur for the upcoming 2021 Fourth of July Celebration Weekend. After the release of the most current emergency order issued by the county and the continuing phased reopening of our facilities, we feel the options listed below offers the safest options for both our residents and staff. Number one, parade, we recommend the cancellation of the parade, which would have been held on Saturday, July 3, 2021, as it would be very difficult for our staff to ensure a safe environment for the Fourth of July Parade participants, staff and patrons due to its overwhelming attendance in past years. For B, a pool party, this is a tradition held at the Aquatic Center on the Fourth of July from 12 to 5 P M. This year, we recommend hosting the event on Sunday, July 4, from 12 to 5:30 P M, which would allow the following. A, two sessions with time to clean in between. Session one would go from 12 to 2:30. Close for cleanup and sanitizing from 2:30 to 3:00. Session two would open from 3:00 to 5:30. Pre-sale of tickets, maximum capacity of 60 people per session, per session, not including staff. Music, either sound system or DJ, prepackaged food, including the cost of entrance. In the past, we have grilled hot dogs and hamburgers, whatever. However, due to COVID-19 protocol, we will be eliminating this aspect. We will not rent the cabanas on this particular day. We will provide additional shade, tents or umbrellas. Old shade areas will be first come, first served, limiting the capacity to six people per shaded area. Fireworks will be held at the golf course to continue the tradition from years past. Leading up to the event, we will encourage attendees to maintain social distancing and wear masks at all times when walking around and, around and about. This year, we recommend not allowing attendees to gather, gather until one hour before showtime, as well as encouraging those who can view the fireworks from home to do so. We've also, and Omar will address that, also looked at the possibility of providing the virtual fireworks so people can watch from home and he'll discuss what the options for that are and the cost. And then attached, you have a couple of flyers that they've come up with, preliminary draft for the event. Questions? There they are.
Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So I, I think I've been pretty clear in the, since I've been up here about wanting to do something special for July. I kept holding out hope, right? We've, we've lost two, we've had two River Cities festivals canceled. We had the fireworks last year canceled. I even brought up a discussion item asking for, for Parks and Recreation to kind of brainstorm and some ideas for some things that we could do in addition to do something special, holding out hope that, that July was going to be better, right? It was just our carrot on the stick. If, if Omar's staff feels like we can't do the parade, then, then, then I'm going to side with, with Omar because I trust, I trust that, that his opinion in terms of what we can and can't, you know, do safely. But that being the case, the pool party, we've always done in the past. So we're, we're basically doing less this year than prior to COVID. And, and if, if that's what we have to do, but I, I just feel, I continue to feel strongly that we should, we should try to, to do something special for the city because we've, we've, we've really gone through a tough time and I want us to be able to celebrate our country. And I'd like to do something, my, my goal is to do something in addition to what we normally do. So right now we're doing less. So I don't know if, if there are some other options. I know that when we were deciding, I wasn't on the council at the time, but when we were deciding on canceling last year's fireworks, we, we had a discussion about what are, what are other municipalities doing, right? What are, you know, what, what are they doing in the middle of COVID and have they decided to cancel? And I believe there were a few cities that were still going through with it. Maybe that's something that we could discuss. What are other municipalities doing? Can we have like some kind of outdoor movie night or some kind of concert? I mean, I understand the parade, the parade is hectic, the, the, obviously we all know what happened at the last parade, right? With the whole like water thing and I, that, that's a whole can of worms and logistically very difficult. Under normal circumstances, the parade is probably very logistically difficult to, to manage. So during, during, you know, the tail end of COVID, I understand that it's probably more difficult. But I, I put it to the members of the council, I mean, I, I would really, really not like to get to July and be doing less for this Fourth of July than, than, than before we were even in COVID. So I don't, I don't know what options there are to, to do something special and maybe we can ask around and see what other people are doing. But I, I don't, I really, really, really would want to do something better than this. And I, and I say this because in my day job, you know, I run a school, so I, I know, I, we've been through this whole thing with, with kids in person and we're starting to see the light and things are starting to loosen up and we're trying to see how we can do more and more and still be safe. But, but I just, I'd like to continue to ride that wave and I see this as kind of taking a step back. And I feel like the community deserves, deserves it.
Anyone else?
Through the chair, Omar, in your professional opinion, are we at a position here on April 26th, April 26th, to take this decision this early?
Well, honestly, I'll be very honest with you, a lot of cities are basically on the same thing we're discussing now. Everybody's on the fence because the emergency order that came out early April changed things dynamic. But at the same time, a lot of cities are very hesitant to move forward with something like the Fourth, the Fourth of July. To answer your question, Councilman, a lot of cities are not doing much, if anything. They are stretching it to possibly fireworks and fireworks only. A lot of them have stayed away from any type of event where there's bounce houses and rides and stuff like that. Maybe because people are a little bit hesitant, they don't want to be the first city that does something like that, they get exposed to the. They get exposed to the media. There's a lot of chatter on our recreation side where people are still not really leaning towards doing things like that. However, we wanted to do the aquatic center because we felt we could at least control access there. It's 60 people, we can control it, it's first come, first served, so at least we have some way of monitoring what's going on.
But that's only 120 people in total, right?
Again, this is something that we're not opposed to doing anything.
I got you, I got you.
We were the first department actually in the county to open up our ball fields right away to the community. So we want to move as quickly as possible to provide the service that we can to the community as much as we can. But it's, it's very tricky, it's very, very tricky. We need to know as fast as possible because.
Do you think it's unreasonable to perhaps wait till June 1st to make a decision?
On the parade, are you asking on the parade?
For all of it.
It depends. Right now that'll put us in a very tough situation.
I understand.
Planning wise, it's very difficult. The firework company, to be very honest with you, they lost so much money last year that she's like, if you tell me July 3rd, I'll shoot fireworks on the 4th.
I know. I know we set her.
You gotta give me some time, but she was like, listen.
I know we set her.
Lost so much last year that they're like.
To, to add to Omar's remarks, as far as the fireworks company, they do need to know with some advance notice because they do need to coordinate with the fire department for permitting. And that process, my understanding is takes four to six weeks.
Yeah, I, well, I, I think fireworks should be out of the equation. I think either we should, yeah or nay, either, either do them or don't, period.
Correct. Yeah, I do, if you ask me professional opinion, I think fireworks, we need, we should make a decision relatively quickly.
Agree.
So we could get with the company and then get with police department and public works to address certain things that need to be a little bit different due to COVID. Event wise, we've thought about several ideas. We thought about doing a concert at the circle, shutting it down. We met with police. It's tricky, it's hard because if we shut down the street, the circle for, for an event, but we have the fireworks roughly at the same time, they don't have enough manpower to manage.
Right, right, right.
Right. We discussed doing something at Prince Field in conjunction with the water event. Staff wise, do we, how do we social distance people, wearing a mask? Do we, do we want to be that first city to do something like that? And then we have what's called a super spreader. The reality is this, everybody from the Recreation Department that's considering this, they're hesitant because of the fact of.
We don't want two weeks later to start having, Omar, let's, let's do one thing with the fireworks because I think that's something that you do need the decision right now and we can probably agree on this now. Can we get, I know last year we requested the ability to cancel to very near because obviously everything changes. But the fireworks company gave us the ability to cancel, I think, up to two weeks prior, which is really reasonable. Within two weeks, we know pretty much we can go ahead. If we could get that same contract with them, would everyone be in agreement to?
We should definitely make a move on that tonight.
The fireworks, it's outdoors, it's at night, it's something to look forward to and, and, and if we can get refunded, I think it was $16,000 that we have set aside. Which was very magnanimous of the, of the company to let us cancel up to.
Through the chair, we're talking about fireworks with folks showing up?
Yes.
Pardon me, yes, fireworks at the golf course, like we normally do. And with, if we, if the company will give us the contract to cancel up to 14 days before, by then, you know, we should know that it's something doable. Hopefully it will be, just accept the motion for that. Let's do that, that we go with it and then we can talk about the other stuff.
Through the chair, motion to approach the firework company with a two-year, a two-week bridge to the contract with the fireworks for the Fourth of July.
Second.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bahat?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor, for just discussion, just for one minute, I don't think I would have made this decision a year ago that I just made tonight.
Okay, and so now let's talk about other recreational activities for the Fourth of July or around the Fourth of July. Obviously, the pool thing would be great, you know, the kids would love that and it's before the fireworks. It gives them something to do during the day. Could you explore some of the other, give it a little more thought of maybe how we can augment that? Is that, what is the Fourth of July, is it on a Saturday?
Sunday.
It's a Sunday.
Sunday, for sure.
Okay, so maybe that whole weekend of having some activities leading up to the Fourth of July.
I would probably recommend if we were to do something, we might consider doing it on the 3rd.
Okay.
Because on, on the actual day of the Fourth of July, it is a Sunday and we're pretty much without pool event, it's our hands.
But maybe something leading up that weekend to celebrate either Friday night or Saturday or something.
We could try something Friday night or the 3rd to see what we can come up with. A movie night is not a bad idea, actually.
Movie night.
We could do social dis, we could do it at Prince Field, things like that. So we have, we have some ideas. Honestly, we, we brainstorm ideas all the time, it's just with COVID and everything.
With the, with the Easter egg drop, the way you had that, I, I am in awe of you and Caitlin and your, your staff of the ideas you've come up with to keep things moving through the pandemic of just nonstop. The Recreational Department has done an excellent job of thinking out of the box.
We'll come up with some stuff and we'll give you guys some options at the next meeting, kind of that we could at least fit it in that Friday night. I know in the years past, we've had the, I don't know if the car shows coming back. We could work with them if they do it Friday night, then we could do something Saturday night. So at least we have, you know, like an eventful weekend that will into the fireworks show. So yeah, there's, there's options. We're just hesitant, just like a lot of other people because it comes down to, how can we provide it? But the movie night, actually, I like a lot. I like that and we could incorporate some other things into that, that we could make it festival and make it nice and.
For that Saturday perhaps or.
Omar, maybe, maybe we could convene the Recreation Board and see if they have any ideas.
Good idea. Hey, that's.
By June 1st. Signed them up to volunteer the weekend, yeah.
Great.
Omar, that's all you need, right?
Augment the city staff.
Exactly what the boards should be helping us with.
The virtual is something I do want to bring up. I know that, that William said I would discuss and I want to keep you guys in the loop. We're considering doing it virtually also for people who don't want to go to the golf course or cannot watch it from the front of their house. We think it's the right thing to do to make it fair for everybody. However, there's a cost associated that's a little bit interesting. If we do it in-house, which we could, there's roughly about, say about a $4,000 cost, give or take. However, we don't know how good the signal will be and whether it's worth it, the clarity of it. Where someone, if we, if we're doing it, you might even really see it that good from your house. If you get top notch virtual, it's roughly about $10,000.
That's.
That is, you will be able to watch it from your house, like if you're watching normal TV right now. So there's a cost associated. Now, last year we saved money, we didn't have the fireworks show. So I don't know if we could use that money to try that out this year. But virtually is, is extremely tedious and quite the challenge.
And I can't imagine people are, you know, there's a lot of virtual fireworks you watch elsewhere that you wouldn't have to watch.
You read my mind. You had brought that up last year, that why, why were we going to pay for fireworks to have people watch a virtual when you could just go online and find, find a really nice fireworks display, so. Mayor, I did want to say that, that Omar's shop does a great job and they're, they're the tip of the spear. And I know that ultimately the decision falls on us to kind of push them, you know, they're, obviously they're, they're trying to, to provide us with their best assessment. But I think that now that we voted on the fireworks, I think that, you know, what Councilman Best said, like, let's, let's set a date and let's see if this trajectory continues. And if you can brainstorm some things, we did, in my day job, we did two outdoor movie nights and everybody was just so happy to be outside, like it was, you know, phenomenal. So if you guys can brainstorm some stuff and we can buy them some time that we can kind of see what other people are doing, where's this trajectory going? I think that we can make a, a more informed decision.
We're good with the, with the aquatic center?
Yes.
Okay, we're good with the fireworks and, and no virtual?
No.
I just think you stay away from, that's too expensive. It's just, especially with the unknowns, right?
Come back to the next meeting with some options for either Friday or Saturday night, okay?
Yes.
Through the chair, really quick, really quick, sorry. Omar, do you think we can incorporate maybe like a limited barbecue type of thing, like family night? How would that work, like on an open area?
The barbecues, we're not supposed to serve food.
Okay.
So that's kind of where the, the packaged food, we have to get with a vendor that, that has like little plastic packages, like when you stay at a hotel, like the continental breakfast.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So we're going to do something like that for the, for the aquatic center. If not, we would barbecue, I mean, it would be great. But we will, we'll look at our options. If not, maybe we get like a food truck or something like that or a local vendor that could help us out with that. But as a public for us, things have changed. They don't want us exchanging food with people and, and it's, then it becomes a huge nightmare for us if someone happens to catch COVID and they're going to blame it on us because we didn't have the right gloves on. Forget about it. We'll have pizza, take a slice and go.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, like the last movie night was great, everybody went to their own tents. They can take their items in their own tents with their families.
So, but we, we, we'll come up with some good stuff. You guys have had some good ideas, I've taken some notes, we'll definitely, I would love to, we loved the Fourth of July. The aquatic party was great because we actually had like a barbecue and you could smell the hamburgers and hot dogs and it was just very festive. Yeah.
Yeah.
We had, but it's just, everything is so difficult now.
Bring back the parade because so many communities get rid of their parades and.
We're the only one that has it still.
Were they like the only, right?
Where, yeah, and I'm, that's just.
Why don't we just, why don't we?
Typical Americana, you know.
Why don't we hold off to June 1st before we make that decision? Because the parade doesn't require that much logistics and stuff.
Requires a lot of planning to organize.
For police, that's about it.
February, we start. The biggest issue we're having with the parade is a lot of people don't want to participate. I'm going to be honest with you guys, a lot of people have reached out or we've kind of like, you know, feel people out, they're like, ah, we don't want to participate because they have people in a car. We don't, it's just, it's become where you have people who want to participate and others that don't. And the biggest thing that scares me that that event is extremely hard to control already. That one could set us up pretty bad. Yeah. Planning wise, it's, I mean, we have it down packed, you line the cars up, you go down the street, you turn. It's, it's, it's getting everybody to, if we get people to participate and then how can we control that many people in certain areas at once where we don't get exposed? That's where it's tricky.
The water zone would be, the water zone's difficult to manage.
I would recommend no water zone, you can't.
Under normal circumstances and you could do away with it and people will ignore you and they will bring the water and they will have their water wars, like that's.
Fourth of July, you can't.
We've discussed the parade at length and we, we feel the tradition is great, we would love to have it, we just don't know if we could give the city a safe parade.
I think it's something to plan for a future year and I hope, and I'm hoping in future years, and we do have, and we could have more of the marching bands and the, you know, just the, I guess, involvement of a lot of different organizations being in the parade and.
Maybe we, you know, if, if this thing moves along the way we hope it does, you know, all of us, maybe we can do something around Christmas and have Santa Claus in it, in the parade.
Caitlin has a really good idea for a parade.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll surprise you guys one day.
Like the Macy's thing, you know?
She does, she has a really good idea for a parade. I won't take credit for that one. We, we've been talking about it in COVID, so we're waiting for this to.
Got you.
Thank you. And thank you for everything y'all have done to keep our community active and having fun.
Thank you.
You know.
Thank you guys for your support.
Thanks for, thanks for, thanks for staying so late, you guys, I know you'll work early in the morning. Thank you.
Okay, reports, reports from our city attorney.
No report this evening.
Okay, from our city manager.
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that our vaccination site this week at the community center, they've actually added another day, so they're going to be there Wednesday and Friday of this week. Johnson and Johnson vaccine, one shot. 18 and over, all you need is a Florida ID showing that you're a Florida resident and you're good to go. And I'm working with them on future dates also. And that's Wednesday and Friday, and then Thursday, we have the food drive at the community center again.
Yes.
And William, if I can add the COVID-19 testing at the Lions Club from 9 to 4.
We were, we were, when are they going to start Thursday, right?
Thursday, the 29th at the Lions Club and it's for COVID-19 testing from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m.
That's correct. We had a, we had a medical clinic reach out to us and wanted to use our city facilities if possible to do free COVID testing. But with everything we have going on at the community center, I referred them to the Lions Club and they got together and they, I guess they worked it out. So they're going to be doing it at the Lions Club beginning April 29th, free COVID-19 testing. And they're going to be there probably for a month.
Wonderful.
That's all I have, ladies.
Thank you, William. City Council, let's start with Councilman Best, Vice Mayor Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, I heard a lot of people speak tonight in open forum and naturally we didn't respond, but I don't know what really I should say about this, other than I think it's being blown totally out of proportion, quite frankly. Most people know what my political affiliation is and I'll let it be. I don't in any way, shape or form see an American flag as a political advertisement for anything other than this country. And for that reason, there was, there was something very important that was said earlier by one of the spokesmen this evening and that had to do with follow the money. And I think that is a problem. I agree with you there. However, I, we're going to end up discussing it up here, it's going to have to, it's going to happen. And, and it'll go where it goes. I, I appreciate those, those people that did get up here and speak on behalf of, of doing something to eliminate the hashtag that's, that's on the signs as they exist. But that same thing was on the signs when they were there a year ago too. So, you know, I, I, I know the people that are responsible for putting these, these flags up, they're good people. I don't share their political affiliation, I'm afraid, but they don't mean any malice by doing that. I mean, are you going to object to, what if, what if one of the signs or, or that was put up there said made in Russia? Is that political advertising? Made in China, political advertising? We're not saying by putting something like that up there that vote for this brand of thinking. It just happens to be these people were involved in probably the procurement of the flags and somebody went to them and bought the flags. Now, does that constitute making a contribution to a political party or making a political statement? I'm not sure. I think it's, well, you had your say earlier, you guys had your say earlier, I'm speaking now.
Everyone had a chance to speak, so let.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sold on the, on the, on the, on the politicalization of this whole thing. I'm, I'm really not. And I, I, quite frankly, I'd like to see it go away. I, I think it's a, it's a beautiful demonstration for the city. Not too many towns have that at all. You can drive around Dade County, well, 34, 34 municipalities, you're not going to see anything like that. Just like we talked about parades a minute ago, you don't see too many, too many municipalities doing parades either. Is it political? I don't know. I guess we'll, we'll start that out. Anyway, that's on that. The hedges, the hedges. I, I got this one picture here from the folks that were here earlier. Actually, the one next door to my house didn't make the list. But it's a beautiful hedge and as you can see here, and this again, going back to the boards that we discussed earlier, right? This is, this is, this is perfect for them. Just, this is, this is to be put in their lap and let them work it and then bring it to us with the recommendations. So there's an awful lot of hedges that meet this description in Miami Springs. This particular picture here, to me, doesn't seem to be even, even close to a safety hazard. It's a height issue. Again, follow the code, right? I mean, that's, that's a suggestion. William, thank you for putting that list together for us this week that you sent to us all for the workshop meeting on the 5th. And thanks for including several of my items on it. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks very much.
Woman Bravo? All right, so I guess the time has come for, for me to speak. So like all of you, I always want to have an open mind and try and do my own research because we're all human at the end of the day and we have feelings, which I understand. So I always want to give that fair chance and look at both views. But I also like to stick to, to logic and to facts and so anyways, I'm just going to read off of my notes so I don't miss anything that I've put some time in putting together. So I'd like to start with a hashtag one nation cannot be owned, as I think Dan Will said. The phrase hashtag one nation does not. The phrase hashtag one nation does not refer to a specified group, political party, person, place, or thing. I understand people are trying to tag hashtag one nation to onenationamerica.org, which are two different entities. One Nation America does not have a hashtag listed on their website. With the intention that it was not done there to hurt anybody or to affiliate one nation with anybody because we all own that that term. It doesn't belong to anybody. So I think maybe um it's seen as if the conservative party uses it more. But I think that we all have the same right to use those two terms, those two words as much as anybody else. It's just a hard and a sensitive topic. And it's unfortunate that one nation has been tainted by onenationamerica.org. All of you know, you know, my political affiliation as well, but I also believe in a balanced system. And um, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. Councilman Fajet.
Thank you. So I wanted to start by by giving my uh sincere appreciation to the people that are here and that still that stayed till the end. Thank you. You made it to to the end. Um, and and as a matter of fact, I've reached out and spoken to uh to several of the people that spoke tonight and some people that didn't show up. I've been, I've been getting lots of feedback from people on on both sides and and I'm one who reveals strongly that I want to reach out to the people that are disagreeing with me so that so that we can try to to understand each other. Um, so uh my statements at the end of last meeting that are at the one hour twenty two mark are are there for people to hear and also my letter to the editor. Uh, if uh I heard people say that it was condescending and patronizing and dismissive and and for that I apologize. That was not my intent. Uh, but I do apologize if it was taken this way. Uh, maybe it's because I was one of the people that was up at four in the morning putting up the flags with with the intent of of doing something nice and beautiful. And so maybe uh, but there there is something to what I was trying to say and I was trying to be careful with my words. Um, but I do apologize if I wasn't careful enough. But um, I do feel that uh while research, deep research was done, and I think that that was mentioned today, but I think that the the research was narrow. Um, because some points, and again, I I don't think that it was brought before the council uh framed as an inquiry. It was brought to us with conclusions already having been drawn. Uh, and and those those conclusions excluded all alternative explanations and 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 other things almost exclusively like I brought up like if you, if when I on my phone on this little machine that we all have in our pockets, when I Google hashtag one nation and it's the hashtag, right? When I Google hashtag one nation, the first thing that comes up is is a is a Australian political group, right wing group. The second thing is one nation slow pitch softball. Right? When I bring that up, like I don't, I don't feel like people like I I feel like people are just dismissing, right? You know, speaking of being dismissive, I think people are dismissing that as as an al- alternative. Then the next thing that comes up is the one nation America, which we've talked about at length, uh, right? Then there's, it sends you to one nation Instagram. Then there's a one nation uh party USA, which from my reading of it, they were like, we hate the right, we hate the left and and we want to be right in the middle. And then the next thing that comes up is a one nation commission that and they're the anti, and I brought this up at the last meeting, they're an anti racism group. And if you click on their website, uh, they have along the top hashtag one nation in red letters all along the top in the one nation commission. And they're an anti racism group, right? And so they're using hashtag one nation. So why did I I bring that up? Because it's been said repeatedly that that a certain group has co-opted uh, this uh hashtag. And and even now, the the councilwoman was saying that like the one nation America is a different entity from hashtag one nation. Uh, uh, a hashtag is not an entity. It it doesn't represent anything. Like if right now I put a post on Instagram and I put on that post, the Miami Dolphins stink. Right? And I hashtag Miami Dolphins. Anybody that searches hashtag Miami Dolphins, my post saying that they stink is going to come up. Because it's not tied to the Miami Dolphins. It's not owned by the Miami Dolphins. You're not directed to anything that the Miami, it's just anybody who wants to tag. It's like a keyword search. It's a category, it's a categorization. And that's just one function, right? I I would encourage anybody, if you open up Instagram, right? And you go to the search bar and you search hashtag one nation, what you're basically asking it to do is show me everybody who's created a post and tagged it with the hashtag one nation. And what comes up with is four hundred and forty thousand posts have tagged hashtag one nation. And the overwhelming majority have nothing to do with politics. As a matter of fact, I've come to learn, right? That the majority is like the Las Vegas Raiders NFL football team. Because apparently, if you guys know football, the Raiders consider themselves Raider Nation. And so they post and so have they co-opted one nation? They have not because uh hashtag one nation is not a name. It is not a proper name. Uh hashtag one nation is not a link that directs because I I think there was also a misunderstanding about uh about Tom and that when he when he searched for hashtag one nation, it took him to miamisprings.com. Uh, or at least that's how it was. I'm not sure if that's what he said, but uh, hashtag doesn't direct you anywhere. It just shows you everybody who has used the hashtag. So uh hashtag one nation isn't a link that directs you anywhere. Hashtag one nation is not a symbol. Hashtag one nation is not a trademark. It is not a name. It is a hashtag. And a hashtag is not proprietary. Uh, not to mention, there's other functions, uh, there's other functions of a hashtag that go beyond the categorization like keyword search, like the example that I've uh put in my letter that you could say live today like there's no tomorrow hashtag Carpe Diem or hashtag seize the day. You're just contextualizing something that you're saying. So uh, I I think that that's an important point because we're talking about a hashtag and I feel like we're talking past each other because a hashtag is is a hashtag. It's not some of the things that we're saying because I, there's an anti racism group. Now, would that be considered political speech if you were do using that? No. It's, it is a hashtag. Because anybody could put hashtag one one nation and when you search it, you'll come up. It doesn't matter whether you're in the anti racism group or the Karl Rove group or whether you're an indigenous Indian group that I saw was on there or whether you're the Las Vegas Raiders. If anybody could use it, it's a hashtag. So having said that, it it leaves us only with a context. And the context is that we have a contemporaneous account of what the intent and it was when this happened uh a year ago when this project first started. And we have an article in miamisprings.com uh, where uh the gentleman, one of the gentlemen who organized it talked about that this is about covid and about unity and the great irony of ironies. And maybe I think this is why I'm kind of digging my heels in a little bit. And I, again, I appreciate and everybody in here who I've spoken to personally. I, what do I tell you? I encourage you to come to the meetings and speak up. Please come and speak up. Speak your mind. Tell us what you think. I want everybody to hear. But the irony of ironies is that the intent of hashtag one nation, when you read in the article, it was about we're in covid and we're stronger when we're together and when we're united and we can beat covid and it was all about unity. And that's why they created the hashtag to contextualize unity. And and we're divided about it, which that just boggles my mind. Now, I'm wrong all the time. If you ask my wife, she'll she'll tell you. I'm wrong all the time. So I could be wrong about this. I had a conversation with Mr. Wells. I think he should be respected. The guy is is a veteran. He served in the Air Force. He should be respected. I respect everybody here for your opinions and for your concern and for coming to the meetings and voicing your concerns. That's what we need. Uh, but I feel like we're just gonna agree to disagree on this one because I just don't, I don't see this as political. And and my, and I've mentioned this to the, and this will be the last thing I say, the people that I've talked to, I've said I I don't want this to to turn into the, because it's very easy for somebody to say, well, this is just censorship and this is that woke cancel culture and and this and and I I feel like there is some just like the the signs are being accused of of some underlying bias. Maybe there's some confirmation bias in the fact that the only group that they're trying to tie this to is the right wing group. And I'm no fan of of that group, okay? But all I'm saying is that like, why are we going to censor a sign when we have a contemporaneous account of what it means and what it was there? We have definitions of hashtag that say that this isn't proprietary, doesn't send you anywhere, it doesn't belong to anything, it's not tied to anybody. I just don't understand why we're divided about it. And I hope that we can come together around it. Uh, you guys know where I stand. I'm open to hearing and listening to everybody. I reach out to people and and call. But uh, but again, that was the purpose of my letter was to just talk about like, please, let's not fall into the into these traps. Like to me, it seems pretty straightforward. Uh, but I'm I'm open to hearing what everybody uh else has to say and uh and that's it. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, madam. Mayor, I am um I've been taken aback by a lot of the things that I've been reading. And in fact, I uh I called Mr. Alonso yesterday on a Sunday afternoon to say, hey, how do we, how do we procedurally deal with issues like this? And so uh, and I asked, is this something we could put on the agenda? He said, well, not for tomorrow because it's already, the agenda's done. And what I took away from the two days of people speaking here and 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 I read the newspaper and and so forth and so on is that I thought we could come to some resolution. And and maybe I'm the only one on the dais that thinks that we should probably try to come to a resolution on this. Um, I, sometimes it is important to agree to disagree. But um I think that I understand a couple of things is number one, it doesn't seem to me to have been malicious intent. At least I haven't seen any evidence of that. Number one. Number two, the flags and everything, excuse me, everything else is great and I'm a veteran and I, you know, that's that's wonderful. But I think that we need to also be able to not just disagree, but maybe be able to talk about why we disagree. And I don't know that the forum here is is the best format because I'd rather see us put it on the agenda and have a conversation about it. But um, you know, I may be in the minority here. At least I feel that way. That I would have preferred to have heard some of the folks who participated, I know you did, um, to come and speak about you know, in open forum. So we could hear um, you know, different sides of this. Um, so I'm, I I guess I'm a little disappointed that we're probably not going to find a resolution. Maybe we can't find a resolution, but I think that if we want to try to stop talking past each other, then we need to try to find workable resolutions. Um, and you know, there when I first heard about this and I asked uh, Mr. Alonso, because I was meeting with him on some other things. Uh, he mentioned to me that uh that the effort last year and and this year had to do with united in, you know, in in times of covid and 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 maybe that was lost. Because that was not on there's no tag on that and you know, so and that's in part what led to other folks to say, well, you know, one one nation means this and hashtag means that. And um and I'm, you know, it it, I I'm not sure that I have a uh an answer other than to try to, I'm always person to try to work with some kind of mediation. Right? So that we can get past things. And that when things come up, we don't have to jump to conclusions and, you know, just try to figure out how to to work these two. I thought putting it on the agenda for a next meeting might be a way to do it. And I I still think so. But um the complaint on the code violation that Mr. Wells made, I think that has a different procedure. Because it went to the city manager. I'm not sure what our role is, if any, in that regard, but that's uh, I I think something that uh should be attended to. So to me, it's important to respect our public spaces. And I'm not saying that the folks disrespected the public space. I'm saying that there's an appearance of a disrespect of our public space, which could border on a code violation. I don't know the code that well to to say that, but I think that when um issues like this come up, we need to try to figure out, okay, what's the best way to resolve this? I'm not sure I agree with Bob about, you know, blowing it out of proportion, but I I understand where it might appear to be that way. So I'm not sure how we proceed with this. You know, I'd rather, I'd rather like to see us. I don't want people leaving here tonight and and those watching and and even the folks that participated in this project, this flag project to feel like, wow, we can't, we can't do anything because you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be interpreted as political. But I always see a a resolution. An acceptable resolution, right? And I don't think that there are enough folks here who have participated on that side of this project to to even consider it. But I think that that would be always my goal as an individual. When there's ever, whenever there is a conflicted situation that comes about is what is the nature of the conflict? And is it, is it, is it something that can be mediated? And resolved in an acceptable fashion? And I would always hope that this would be one of those that we could do that. But I mean, that's, that would be my recommendation to this body. We try to come up with a way to do that. Whether it's an agenda item or 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 a conversation, just getting some folks to sit down and talk about. This is what sparked it. This is what I saw. This is what we try to do. And so folks understand each other's uh sides of the issue. And um you know, because I think that we ask people to come and speak at the public forum. We don't have a discussion. We understand it because I've spoken at the public forum at the city council. And then we get a chance to to, you know, share, but then there's no discussion because you know, it's what we're saying, right? Um, and I respect the protocols and I respect the processes of the council. I just think that maybe there has to be some there has to be some extra official way to handle matters like this that can be productive and that don't violate the sunshine laws, right? And maybe we don't even have to be directly involved. But I don't want people leaving tonight or people sitting at home who organize the flags feeling, well, you know, we've, we, we prevail or we didn't prevail or, you know, you know what I'm saying? The people go back with that stewing a little bit. I think we could resolve this. Sure. Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vasquez. Okay. First of all, thank you, everyone that's spoken here. As a council, people have said, we, your input is greatly valued. We'll never be able to please everyone. But the only way that we can make judgments based on what we think is the best course of action is to hear your, your concerns are what everyone's concerns are. And, and what I would like to caution everyone is that it's a really slippery slope to start labeling people and by association. And by association, because you're talking to, you know, someone who is liberal and he's liberal and all your friends are liberal, then you must be, you know, highly liberal and you belong to these groups. And that's kind of what we start doing when everything, I know when I Googled hashtag One Nation, what I came across is a group that is anti discrimination for Asians. And that's what I found. You know, and I guess if I kept going and going and going, I could find other things that would, you know, offend me. But realistically, it's, that's the first thing I found. So I'm not going to go any further with that, but I just want to caution everyone with, you know, let's not be too hasty about this by association, by association, by association, because that's a rabbit hole that hurts us all. And in reality, we have so much more in common than, you know, being with one party or the other. And let's not be getting to the trap where we're the foot soldiers for two parties who really don't care too much about us. They care about staying in power. And I'll end it with that. With the hedges. This I do want to talk about because this is a beautiful hedge. This is my neighbor. He lives right around the block. On the other block, on the same block, but going in the other direction, last February, right before the pandemic hit, I was riding my bike on a Sunday morning and riding my bike around the block. And there was a hedge just like this. And if you look at this hedge, I was going on the sidewalk, my bike, I don't go that fast. There was a car pulling out, one of my neighbors pulling out of their driveway, going slowly, thank goodness, because I could not see him and he could not see me. And then he has a circular driveway. Neither of us could see each other. He hit me. He hit me and knocked me off my bike and way into the swale, almost into the street. I got injured. I hit my head. I got a, a cut that I needed stitches on my hand. And my bike was all mangled. By the grace of God, it wasn't serious injuries because he was going very slow backing out of his driveway. And I was riding my bike, not very fast, but normally. If I had been pushing a stroller, or if there had been, if I had been pushing a stroller, the stroller would have been hit with a child in it. Because that's the first thing that came around this hedge. If I had been riding my bike with, you know, my grandchildren in front of me on the bike, they're the ones that would have been hit. So after that happened, I was, my neighbor, God bless them, were just as distraught as I was and, you know, helped me home. I was shaking and very sore and had to get to the emergency room, to the urgent care to get the stitches taken care of and all. But after that happened, I reached out to, to our city code enforcement and I said, what, what is our code with hedges? Because this is something I've walked past that house numerous times, had never thought about that problem until I got hit. It turns out that we have a code in place that says that the front yard hedges have to be, is it four feet, three and a half feet high? Um, this is just the hedges in the front of your house. The reason for this, I would have never thought about it. I would have never cared until I realized that, you know, I got hit because he was, he couldn't see me. I couldn't see him. And in reality, if you know about safety, that's how you protect each other. Because you can be at a stop, you can have the green right of way on a traffic signal. And it doesn't matter that you have the right of way. If somebody runs a red light and you're not observant of that and you can't watch out for them, you can't stop and get out of the way. So, you know, it doesn't matter who's right or wrong in these cases. After that happened, I came to the next city council meeting, which was actually at Monday night, showed my injuries. And I said, I want this code enforced. Because we've already had a near miss where I, by the grace of God, I wasn't killed. I wasn't, you know, or seriously injured. And I don't want this to happen again to somebody else in our neighborhood where their child or they're riding their bike or they're jogging. Now that we have so many people out, you know, walking and they can't stand, get out of the way because they don't see a car backing up. And should it happen, I would feel totally responsible because I saw it. I, I know that this is a possibility. After that, I asked our code enforcement to start enforcing these hedges. COVID hit and we were in the middle of a lot of other things. So, you know, it's difficult to be enforcing ordinances when we're not even open at city hall. And there's nowhere, you know, to take the grievance and the appeal course. As soon as we opened up city hall, I went to our city manager and I said, this is an ordinance that I want enforced because I had a serious incident that I know could happen to anyone else in our community. And I don't want that to, to happen. So I will talk to my neighbor. He already knows because we've talked about this in the past, but I will talk to him again about it. I'm not backing down on this. We have a code in place. It needs to be enforced and it's there for whatever reason. It was there for aesthetics or I don't know, but it serves a purpose for visibility to protect our, our neighbors. And, and even if he was wrong and backing up and he hit me, who cares? I could have been killed. I mean, what difference would it matter that I was right? Or that I had the right of way? So that's my, as you can tell, I'm going to dig in my heels on this one. The code's already in place. We're not creating a new code. We're enforcing it. And that's, and we should be enforcing our codes. And there's a lot of codes throughout the city that, you know, it's true. We have two code enforcement officers who, God bless them, are doing the best they can. There's always going to be things that are going to be missed. And if someone doesn't like that, you know, that they got a violation, they're going to say, well, why is my neighbors? Well, tell us who, what neighbor it is that's violating and we'll go after them too and get them to cut down their hedge too. With that.
One thing, I already talked, I know. Why don't we do something like Councilman Vasquez said, like you just said, why don't we give the code review board these two issues and let them deal with it and bring it, bring us back some, why don't we direct them out of this meeting?
I think out of this meeting, Councilman Vice Mayor, best, we've come up with several activities for.
The signs on Curtis Parkway, political advertising, let them look at that and let them look at the hedges. There's two perfect, perfect things to convene a meeting for the code review board.
Things that we came up with, with the recreation committee for the Fourth of July.
Well, I think we could at least break them in slow here and give them a couple of things.
But there's several boards that we said we're going to appoint someone to. And we already have, and I think there was a fourth one too. I don't remember what the other one was.
Right.
Of another board that would be something we could pass on to them. I mean, if you're going to make your calls to appoint someone to your board, you can tell them that we'll likely have an issue for you to review soon.
Exactly.
Which will make it more desirable for them to be there.
If I can just interject, on the hedge issue, I do want to remind the, the council that if, if, I haven't seen the notice of violation, but I'm assuming that what you have in front of you, or some of you may have in front of you, is a copy of the notice of violation that the homeowner received. Their recourse is to, if they have not already, it's not to appeal to you. It's to appeal to the code enforcement board. And the code enforcement board would determine whether that violation should be upheld or not. So that's within their jurisdiction. And as Mayor Mitchell said, it is.
Code review, it's a.
The code enforcement board will, will determine whether the violation should be upheld or not. And so if they find that the evidence shows that there wasn't a violation of our code, then presumably they should uphold the violation and the person will be ordered to pay a fine and also correct the violation.
Okay. And if you look at each of these photos that they submitted, just imagine yourself walking there, riding your bike or pushing a stroller in front of you and the car's backing up and,
More than that, that's, that's just the beginning.
Yes.
Citywide, you know?
Right, right. And, and all we're doing is, you know, trying to correct something that's already in place. It's a code enforcement issue, just like every, you know, several other code enforcement issues that we, that we deal with every day. Okay. If there's nothing else, thank you. This meeting is adjourned. I get to do that the first time. I think I forgot.
Yeah, you did.